Good evening. This is Select Board Chair Steven Morantz. I will be confirming that all members, anticipate and agenda are here and can hear me. When I give your, call your name, please respond. Josh Levine.
Yes.
Tom, I see you.
Here.
Mark, I see you.
I'm here.
Lynn and Mike, you are also here. This open meeting of the Long Meadow Select Board is being conducted in person with a remote option available to the public consistent with Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. This meeting is convened in person and via Zoom webinar as posted on the agenda and the town's website identifying how the public may join. There's no chat or Q and A function. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longmeadow.org. The public is encouraged to follow along the posted agenda unless I note otherwise. Each vote in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. This meeting will feature resident comments. For residents attending the meeting in person, please fill out a public comment form upon arrival at the meeting. I will call on residents in the order in which the forms are received. For residents participating via Zoom webinar format, members of the public are attendees. If a member of the public would like to speak during resident comment, please use the raise hand icon at the bottom of the screen. The meeting moderator will promote you to panelists, unmute you, and give you permission to speak. If you join the webinar by phone, dial a star nine to raise your hand and star six to mute and unmute. Residents who wish to speak will identify their names and addresses only. Each individual is afforded three minutes for comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. At this point in time, we do Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. For the public, the Long Meadow Fiscal 23 Budget Hearing, the Long Meadow Finance Committee will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, March 30th at 6:30. This budget hearing will take place at Long Meadow High, Meeting Room A15. That's this room. 535 Bliss Road, Long Meadow, Mass. This public hearing is being held to hear residents' comments on the fiscal 23 budget. The Long Meadow Select Board is accepting nominations for its annual Citizen of the Year and Citizen Commendation Awards. Letters of nomination should be emailed to selectboard@longmeadow.org by Monday, April 11th, 2022. For additional information and to fill out a nomination form, please visit www-longmeadow.org/civicalerts or the Select Boards page on the town website. Long Meadow is having a Community Earth Day, sponsored volunteer cleanup that will take place on Sunday, April 10th, 2022, at noon with a rain date of April 24th. Last year, volunteers were able to collect over 3,000 pounds of trash, recyclables, and hazardous waste. For information on how to register, please visit the Earth Day page on longmeadow.org where there's a link to sign up as a volunteer. And last but not least, the town of Long Meadow is currently working on updating the photos on the town website and needs your help. We are looking for photos around Long Meadow that uniquely represent the town. This may include town buildings, people, or town departments. You may submit as few or as many photos as you'd like. We will select a first, second, and third place winner. Please submit your photos to admin assistant@longmeadow.org by April 22nd, 2022. Photos must be no more than one MB in size. If you include a photo of people, please include a form with their permission to be used on the town website. Prizes will be announced on the website and social media the week of March 27th, 2022. Okay. Next up on the agenda is interviews for two vacancies. First one we're talking to is Building Committee. Okay. Hello.
Hi.
So you're applying for the Building Committee?
I am, that's correct.
Tell us who you are and tell us why you're doing this.
Sounds good. So, hi, everybody. I'm Kirsten Avery, and I've been in Long Meadow for about five years now. My husband and I moved from Vegas. We were a military family, so he recently retired. He was up at Barnes Flying, and I'm actually getting ready to go back in and recommission into the Air Force, same up at Barnes as well. So, in the meantime, my kids are at Center Elementary School. They are first and third graders, and so we are happily settled here in Long Meadow, and the town's been great to us. We love it here, and I'm looking for really just ways that I can help out and give back to the community. And as I was looking through some of the committee, the descriptions of the different committees, and seeing where the vacancies were, I noticed with the Building Committee that it just stood out to me, and I think partly because of my background. I don't know if you guys got a copy of my resume, but I do have some experience working for Toll Brothers, which was a luxury home company, a new construction company out in Las Vegas. And for about a year and a half, two years, I was a project manager for them, so had quite a bit of responsibility with just various real estate transactions, managing the construction team, managing the warranty team, working with land development permitting, working with the architects, working with the structural engineers, and things of that nature. So I'm pretty well-versed in the world of buildings and structures, and it's just an interest of mine in general. I just graduated from UConn with my MBA, took a few real estate courses there, so it's just something that I've always been interested in, and I felt like when I was looking at the various committees, that would, my experience and background would lend themselves most to that committee, I think. And then in addition to that, I've been kind of watching what's been going on, the discussions with the middle school and the new proposal that had come out recently and working toward that grant. I've talked to Marty O'Shea a little bit about my interest in helping with that. I don't know how much the Building Committee would be involved with the middle school, but Mike, you had said that there may be some supplementary role, but, you know, those are things that I'm definitely interested in and invested in, especially because, as I said, my kids are at Center, so maybe at some point they'll be, if the schools are upgraded by the time they're in the middle school, that would be, you know, something I'd be happy to contribute my time to as well.
Thank you.
So that's what brings me here.
Okay. Comment? Oh, yes, okay.
Kirsten, thank you very much for applying. Appreciate it. We're looking for people to help, especially somebody with your skills. Just a quick comment, the Mass School Building Authority, MSBA, has a separate, maybe it's parallel, system for assigning or requiring a school building committee that would probably not, you know, be the same, well, wouldn't be the same as our town building committee. And it's something you might want to consider because, you know, the school building committee, based on the work that was done for the high school, was an all-encompassing, you know, responsibility.
Okay.
In terms of, I don't think you'd want to be on both building committees. So something to consider.
Okay.
I don't know where the school building committee's coming or going.
Right.
Or if we're even going to have one yet, we need to go through a process, but just so you know, there is a difference. Our building committee has completed their major, couple of major projects, oversight, the senior, the adult center and the DPW now is more into looking all around in a maintenance mode. So still probably looks at the expertise you have, but I just thought I'd kind of give you that background.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. I'll definitely consider that. I do think I'm leaning more toward the Building Committee.
Okay, that's great. I'm not trying to discourage you or anything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you again for stepping forward.
Sure.
And so the construction, I assume, was in Los Angeles, or Las Vegas?
That's right.
Yeah, and it was new construction?
It was new construction.
So it'll be a little different, some of the projects.
Sure.
Some old buildings the town has to take care of.
Right.
Some of the oldest buildings in town have to be addressed. There's an article on the Warren, actually, about it. But, so, do you have any experience with, you know, I guess elderly buildings, what's that, brand-new buildings?
Not as much. We were landlords for a while with an older building in Las Vegas I am, you know, familiar with, and we've done inspections too on some properties. We don't do any kind of investing in Massachusetts, but just a couple of properties that we've invested in Florida and in Las Vegas, and so we have some experience with, you know, some of the structural deficiencies of those buildings and some of the things that come with that. But in terms of my professional experience with it, that's predominantly the new construction.
And so as far as, you worked with different construction parts of the process, did you work with architects also?
I did. Yep, we worked with architects in helping create new, you know, floor plans and different design elements. Some of it was, you know, custom work for the homeowners, but would have meetings with them, meetings with the structural engineers as well.
All right, great. Well, thank you.
Yeah.
Josh? Question. In terms of what you did out in Las Vegas, alternative energy, did you deal with any of those in your buildings?
That's a good question. I'm trying to recall. I mean, the only thing we really would have, in terms of alternative energy, would have just been, you know, some of the various, you know, heating units and things that would have been, energy-saving heating units, but not extensively.
Okay, because in terms of, as was mentioned, we opened two new buildings in this town in 2021 with apparently no energy-saving, you know, solar panels, heat pumps, not in those buildings. And so hopefully, as you as a member of the Building Committee, would really help point folks in that direction in terms of.
Sure.
Because it's in terms of saving the town money, it's certainly the, you know, it's the best way, I think, to go.
Okay.
So that's something, you know, I would hope you would consider while, because if we're talking about retrofitting buildings, et cetera, so that's a possibility. Okay.
Absolutely. Yeah, I'm making notes, too.
Thank you.
So our process requires that we deliberate, so we let applicants know at our next meeting.
Okay.
No, I think the requirement is a week, but we don't meet.
We don't meet. So when we meet, when we meet two weeks from now, we will.
Okay.
But you'll be deliberating.
Yes, yes.
Great.
Continuously.
It's not required to be at that meeting.
No, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
You'll get a call.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all for me, then?
Yep.
That's it, thanks.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
Next is applicant for the Board of Health.
Hello, I'm Elliot Greenberg. I've lived in Long Meadow since 1991. Have a lot of experience with old buildings. I don't want to be on the Building Committee, though, thank you.
And your address, your current address?
Oh, my current address is 22 Ellington Street.
Thank you.
And I've seen a lot of you around the community, certainly. I'm a gynecologist. I've been with Bay State OB-GYN Group since 1991, and, you know, I've been interested in the Board of Health for a long time, but I'm real involved with Special Olympics also. I've been on the board for Special Olympics for the last 10 years, and I also help coach some Special Olympics teams. So I retired from the Board of Special Olympics, and so I thought it was a good opportunity to investigate the, getting involved with the Board of Health here.
Yes.
Dr. Greenberg, thank you for applying. My perception, we can always use medical personnel and physicians on our Board of Health, so I don't have any specific questions, primarily because I know Dr. Greenberg, but I thank you very much for your application.
Thanks, Mark.
Well, what's your experience with COVID? That's been a big issue for our Board of Health, everything from, should kids go on for Halloween candy?
Yeah, we were pretty actively involved with that, I might add, but, you know, I'm a gynecologist. I don't have specific, I'm not an internist. I don't have specific experience other than the impact that has had on the healthcare, both locally and nationally. You know, we've obviously had to make lots of modifications in the way we see patients and care for patients because of COVID. Between my family, my daughter's a doctor in North Carolina, we've kept pretty up on both recommendations, restrictions, and in Massachusetts and nationally, so I have a general idea, but I haven't had to manage, like in hospital care, I haven't had to manage COVID in a hospital setting.
All right, well, hopefully, we won't be having a lot of COVID issues, but I appreciate your.
Thank you.
Your courage to step up at this time.
We might this summer. This discussion may be coming up again in a couple of months, but hopefully not nearly to the degree it has in the past.
All right, well, thank you for volunteering.
Yeah, thank you.
Josh?
No, I just wanted to say thank you for applying to join the Board of Health. I was happy to have a doctor on the board, especially an experienced one. I just have one question. Do you put up the pumpkin displays on Ellington Street or on Long Health?
Yes, we live in the Blue Colonia that has the different pumpkin scarecrows every year. We've been doing it for three decades now.
Oh, yeah, thank you for that as well.
You're welcome. Come by my house, we'll be there.
Yes, thank you for applying. One question in terms of, if and when COVID does come back, and under the, you know, there is pressure, mask mandates, vaccine mandates, I mean, people might say, I'm not sure if the best way to phrase this, but, you know, personal attacks might not be out of the realm of possibility for this position, which is astounding to me as a Board of Health, but, you know, so it's something I assume you're prepared for.
Yeah, I'm perfectly prepared for it, and Mark knows me, anybody knows me, that, you know, I am somebody that doesn't like opinion, and I'm also very comfortable in a setting where there's, you know, there may be some controversy, obviously, with the whole COVID issues of the last three years, almost three years. There's been a lot of controversy, but I also, every day, day in and day out, talk to patients who aren't vaccinated about why they're not vaccinated, and, you know, I try to do it in a respectful manner. So I'm used to interacting with patients, both who don't understand vaccine and other people who have more political opinions about vaccine. So it's something I'm pretty comfortable with and deal with on a daily basis.
Right, okay. Well, thank you, and as you heard, we will, again, deliberate.
Okay.
So within our next meeting, we'll let you know.
Okay. Super, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good seeing you all, thank you.
Are the Verizon people here?
Yeah, but I think we have to wait.
Do we have to actually wait till the?
Because in theory, people could be coming out, and the public could be waiting to come in at 7:30.
Yes, okay, in theory, I get it, I get it.
That's the rules, and if you'd scheduled for 7:15, it would've been too early, so.
That's true. I would have to wait. Okay, do we want to see if we have any resident comments?
Any comments?
Come on up.
Hi, thank you. Patrick Carnahan, 311 Farmington Road. And I am here to express my request to the Select Board and whoever else makes this decision that regarding the upcoming town meeting, that the CPC warrant articles do not get, I think it's a consent agenda, where you bundle them all in one big bundle, and we vote on the whole bundle. I would like a breakout specifically on the article about the skate park in Bliss Park. I would like greater discussion on that. I don't want that bundled. I want to have more open dialogue, not just in the town meeting, but maybe even outside of town meeting, regarding the associated costs, the true costs of it, the maintenance costs, the lack of a feasibility study aside from the one that they sponsored, there's been no environmental impact statement, I've seen nothing on public safety, public health coming in and weighing in on that. I've never seen a study on the capacity issues in the park regarding a new infrastructure improvement there. Parking's already tight, especially if pools come back in, and the skate park would only add to that. So I would like to see greater transparency regarding the skate park plan, and I think that that can occur if that is not bundled and it's discussed in greater length and detail at the town meeting and maybe even outside the town meeting. So that's why I'm here, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We don't respond generally to public comments, but I think there's a factual issue that I think need to say, is that it's the town moderator who controls the town meeting and not the Select Board. In general, my understanding of the consent agenda process is that anybody at the town meeting has an opportunity to object or stop the consent agenda from happening, you know, and I appreciate you coming here to ask our support, whether we can do that or not, but in this case, the Select Board does not have anything to do with operating a town meeting.
Okay.
Rest of your comments stand as they are.
So would I reach out to the moderator, or should I just do that at the town meeting?
Yes, but what actually happens in town meeting is consent agenda for Articles Number 28 through 37. Does anyone object, and then they, article by article, someone objects at number 31, they say, and then that's taken out.
All you gotta do is, one person has to yell "hold," and that's not the consent agenda.
All right, well, thank you.
And I don't know what, I don't know what Mrs. Townsend's planning to do, but, you know.
All right, well, thank you for informing me, and you got my two cents anyway.
Yeah.
Thank you. We have about eight minutes. Anyone else?
There was someone in. Okay.
Can everyone hear me?
Can't see you.
Yeah. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, and, very good, okay. My name is Michelle Morantz. I live at 117 Rugby Road, and I'm speaking tonight in response to statements hit last week accusing the Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group of using reckless scare tactics in raising concerns that are grossly misleading about gas pipelines and the toxic fumes associated with gas stoves. As Chair of the Long Meadow Pipeline Group, I'd like to remind everyone that our group has never called for dismantling gas pipelines, as many of us and over 75% of other Long Meadow residents have gas hookups. This would be a foolish and untenable position. Instead, for the past four years, we've called on the gas company to repair gas leaks and to drop their plans for the unnecessary and dangerous high-pressure pipeline that they've proposed for our town. At the same time, we've urged EverSource to devote its resources to guide our community in its transition to renewable energy, a position urged by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change and supported by the Massachusetts Next Generation Roadmap Law. We've pointed to economic analyses proving that the costs of gas infrastructure expansion will be borne by the ratepayer, and we've cited scientific studies showing that methane emissions from natural gas continue to contribute exponentially to global warming. These are facts, not scare tactics, that we've conveyed in the hope that Long Meadow will adopt clean energy as soon as possible, believing that the only pipeline that works we should be building now are those used in ground-sourced geothermal energy. As for the supposed reckless scare tactics used by our group in linking toxic fumes to gas stoves, these are actually mailings and Facebook postings from news sources like the New York Times, the Boston Globe, and the New England Journal of Medicine. That these news stories are increasing in number reflects the public's increasing concern over the health threats of gas stoves and the studies that support this finding. Last week, the New York Times reported that cooking with gas, quote, "has been shown to be catastrophic for the environment, emitting potent greenhouse gases like methane into the atmosphere. Worse, a recent study demonstrated that 75% of these emissions occur when the stove is off, generating noxious fumes that get trapped in our homes and are harmful, especially for children." The article ends by saying, "For children who live in a home with a gas stove, the increased risk of asthma is on a par with living in a home with a smoker." The U.S. Public Interest Research Group explains in its fact sheet that the solution suggested last week, a working exhaust hood simply isn't an effective choice. Many hood fans don't vent to the outside, so toxic gases are just recirculated, not removed, and apartments in older homes often lack range hoods. Yes, one could always open a kitchen window when the stove is on, but how practical is that, given New England winters and rainy weather? Clearly, these concerns warrant our attention as consumers and as guardians of our families, our health, and the planet. A final point. In the past three years, nearly 50% of Massachusetts Boards of Health have been so alarmed by the evidence linking gas stoves to health threats that their members have written or signed letters urging Governor Baker to stop gas pipeline expansion until a statewide study on this issue is conducted. Taking such official action is not something that these health professionals would do if the issue were in fact a, quote, "false concern." The Long Meadow Pipeline Awareness Group joins the Long Meadow Board of Health and many other boards of health, as well as the authors of scientific studies over the past four decades, in urging our residents to become aware of the dangers of gas energy, both on our streets and in our homes. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else in the queue?
I do not see anyone.
Okay.
Close enough.
Pardon?
Close enough.
Close enough, so we can help, but we've got three minutes to go before, you never know who's gonna walk in.
By the time this is done.
Okay, so we need a motion to go into public hearing.
So move.
Second.
Okay, so this is a public hearing with Verizon. So I have to focus on Verizon, the vote, if Verizon is here.
We just need to vote.
Well, we do the vote. Oh, votes. Can you take the roll here?
I can.
Yes.
Mr. Rantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. LeCuse?
Yes.
Okay. The floor is yours.
Okay. My name's Steve Clobbered. I work for Pike Telecom. We do engineering work for Verizon, so I'm here to represent them for the poll set, which actually is over near the cell tower over here. The petition, and I can just kind of read from it if you'd like, on Bliss Road, place one jointly-owned poll numbered 43 1/4 slash Electric 43 M. On the north side of Bliss Road, at a point approximately 275 feet westerly from the center line of Bliss Court, and then another poll placed one jointly-owned poll numbered 43 1/4 E, 43 M-1, on the south side of Bliss Road, at a point approximately 275 feet westerly from the center line of Bliss Court. The reason is EverSource wants to do a service upgrade for the cell site.
Gotcha. Can you ask, before I ask for other questions, my question is, you don't work for either Verizon or?
I'm representing Verizon.
But you don't work for Verizon. You work for a subcontractor for Verizon?
Our company is contracted by Verizon.
Okay, so we have a contractor by Verizon asking for something that EverSource wants. I, you know, this is, that's happened before at this board, and I just don't quite get why EverSource doesn't come and ask for something they want. I understand you, it's joint ownership of polls, but it seems like EverSource does not want to.
Right, but the town of Long Meadow, at least this portion over here, is what they call a Verizon-set area, so even though EverSource wants the service and the poll, Verizon will set the poll. Is there other districts and other towns where, okay, EverSource is the setting party who places the poll, and at that point, they would take the public meeting on that poll setting?
Question?
It's, you know, a little complicated sometimes because, yes, there are different towns that have different locations, even within the same town, for different parties, but because Verizon is the party that will be setting the poll, Verizon does the petition.
Question?
I have a vote, counsel.
What?
Mike, I guess my question is, A, what are the wires that are gonna be on this pole? Are they wires going to the cell tower? So they're primarily Verizon, are they fiber optic wires, they just?
Right now, I mean, Verizon is having ownership in the pole, but right now, the only thing that is called for is the EverSource feed.
Oh, so it's, so it's electricity feeding?
It's electricity.
How tall is the poles, are the poles gonna be, and how does that compare to the?
They would be forty-five foot poles.
And, and that's standard in that neighborhood?
That's standard, yeah, yeah.
All right, and, so these are, I don't understand, they're new poles, they're not, you're not replacing existing poles, right?
No.
And so, they're new poles, are they going to a new service, or, I don't understand?
It's a new service upgrade, apparently for the cell tower.
Oh, for the cell tower?
Yeah.
It's further down the road, and, so the, the reason they need to be put here is 'cause the expanses, 'cause there, I imagine there's poles on either, I don't see, I see these poles, but I don't see the other poles that they must connect to, or?
Right, well, they could dig under the road possibly and interrupt the road and go underneath all underground, but for some reason, the EverSource engineer has designed to place a mid-span pole, go across the road, down into the dirt, into the cell site.
Yeah. Well, I know we had talked about major streets in town, like Bliss, which is a major street, not having any wires above, you know, to not accept any poles that go above, that should be going below ground, um, no, that's, I guess that's where I stand. That was a policy, I thought.
It is?
Yeah. Josh?
Uh, is this what's holding up the, the base of the tower, and was this part of the plan originally, and why is it only coming up now? Or has something changed?
Um, not familiar with the plan of the cell tower.
But this is specific, more, Josh?
Well, you say, you say it's an upgrade of service, uh, but this is never, as far as I know, the tower hasn't been in service yet, so, what do you mean by upgrade?
That's what it says on the, uh, petition, it says the reason to accommodate an electric update and to provide for high distribution of intelligence and communications and the transmission of high and low voltage current.
So we would need, we would need Verizon here to answer that question, it sounds like.
EverSource, you mean.
Yes, EverSource.
Yes.
Okay, so you cannot answer what the upgrade actually would be, except it says it's gonna be?
Serving the power to the cell tower is, you know, what I have on the plans.
Right, and so?
They call it a service upgrade because maybe the power on that side of the?
So, it does, yeah, right, so is this part of Verizon's original plan when they had the cell tower to be built, was to have this electrical service?
It would've been EverSource's plan.
Even though it's Verizon's tower, it's EverSource's plan.
It's not Verizon's tower.
It's not Verizon's tower, it's an independent contract, the company's tower who's leasing space to Verizon and?
But it's not EverSource's tower.
Correct.
So, so the folks who built the tower, they're the ones who would've made this request, it would've been in their plans to say, "We need this electrical upgrade at some point in time?"
Yeah, but I bet you they didn't think far enough to say, "Where's power gotta come from, go to?" They just said, "We know we're gonna need power," so.
I mean, as far as I know, just by looking, I mean, that tower is on town property, so there must've been some negotiation with the town to have the tower set there, and rental or agreements and whatnot, I don't know.
So, the fact that, um, this request interferes with, um, our state of policy of no overhead wires on main streets, do we have any suggestions how we're gonna proceed with that, uh, conflict?
Well, the, the intent of the, the policy is to have them put them underground.
Right.
You know, they just don't like it 'cause it costs them more money.
Correct.
But that was, that was the intent of the policy, is so that we don't have overhead wires over the main streets.
And, but both of these, both of these poles are not on the other side of the, one of them crosses, one of them does not, are both on the same side of the street?
No, there's one on either side of the street, and the wire would go across the street.
So instead of going under, they're going over, basically, and I don't even know, it, from the diagram, it isn't even clear, are they coming from underground sources and going over?
No, they're coming from the aerial.
They're, they're gonna be above, they're already above wire?
Yeah.
Okay, um, but, yeah, I, I guess I would say, we, we made that policy, and I think we should go under, you know, we should just have to go under the road. We can give permission for that, I guess. Um, since we're ready for the public, does anyone from the public have any comments on this particular, uh, item in front of us? Okay, assuming there are no public, so, yeah, so, in your capacity, what do you, what would you like from us? A vote to approve this plan, is that the?
That's typically what happens at the meeting.
Okay, and what, what we would like is a vote to approve this plan based on our policy, which would say, "You can do it as long as the wire goes underground," is that what we're saying here? We'll come back with? We'll come back with? We'll close the hearing before we do a?
No, I mean, yeah, the, the issue is, the, the request is for over, is for the placement of two poles, that's all the request is, it has nothing to do with wires. This is a request for replacement of two poles on town property, which is the, the easement right of way. So we can either approve the two poles on town property, and once the poles are set, we don't get to decide what goes on the poles and where the wires go. There's some, they're telling us out of the goodness of their heart, if we, we, we need these poles 'cause we wanna put wires over the, over the street. My opinion, we should be declining this, this petition because, the same reason I want to decline the one on Forest Glen, I don't think we should be putting wires across main streets. You know, so, I mean, I, my consistency is I, I'll vote against this petition, go back to Verizon and ask them to come up with a alternate plan.
So we need to, uh, go out of this public hearing to actually continue this debate? Is that the?
Unless there's any more facts and we need to?
Yes, do you have any, anything you'd like to add?
I, I would, um, I don't know if you've visited the site, but the polls were already set, which normally typically doesn't happen, and I'm not sure how that happened, so, if that's your vote, then I'm guessing EverSource would have to come up with a different plan.
Model?
It's right over here, you can walk out the door.
A bit presumptuous.
Literally look at it.
Set the polls.
I don't know, I typically don't see that there's any polls set or ready.
Okay, uh, right, then, yes, okay. I guess I'd ask you then, uh, is there any others place around Bliss, Bliss Road where the wires cross?
It would, no, it's just there, it's for the cell site, is what interferes.
Okay, yeah. Josh?
I don't really, um, the application is also asking for permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires and above where intersecting public ways, uh, so, are the laterals, cables, and wires below, uh, underground, underground laterals, cables, and wires, that is not referring to these wires going underground, correct? Is that, is there something else that would be underground?
That's typical in all these kind of petitions, for laying conduit underground and putting the cables in them.
Okay, we should move out of the public hearing so we can continue debate? I'll move to end the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
Okay, we're out of the public hearing. So we have this, what's on, I, we have nothing on, on the floor here, we have this request from EverSource. Now, I, what?
You wanna motion to debate?
No, so, but, do I know, do I know overhead wires on Bliss, as we, from, whatever, the overhead wires in Williams, do I know overhead wires on Bliss from the high school to Long Meadow Street? Do we know?
I don't know.
Well, we can go off that.
I don't know, I saw it on the north side, I was like?
I took pictures of it, if you wanna see a picture of it.
I'm just wondering in terms of overhead wires on Bliss Street that already exist?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Do you have wires crossing?
Crossing, oh, I don't, that I don't.
Yeah, there, there are overhead wires along Bliss, but I don't know that there are any crossing, although I, in theory, there's, the wires are going down on one side of Bliss to get to the houses on the other side.
Somewhere.
They must cross the road, you know?
And then, electricity, and so coming over to the school?
Everything to school is underground, it comes off a grassy gutter.
Yeah.
That's, that's got nothing to do with Bliss.
Yeah, so we would be taking an area that's already underground and adding a pole? And something overhead. And something overhead that would then cut across to the, uh, you know, towards the football field and over to the tower.
I mean, the question is, where's the, where's the power, and, you know, where's, where's the power that goes to the tennis courts?
There is a cross wire at the end of Blueberry Hill Road.
That goes across Bliss towards the high school?
It goes across Bliss right at the, uh, by the, the field there.
That's right outside.
I think there's one at the tennis court, that goes across.
The tennis court?
To the tennis court, a small building, there's a pole near the tennis court, I'm not sure if it's a facilities building or coaches, uh, ticket, ticket building.
So the only thing I'm not sure of is when the invitation for bid went out for that cell tower site, if there's anything in those documents that dictate what the town will or won't do, so, I, I don't know that, um, I would wanna look at that, that was several years ago.
So, maybe we wanna put this whole thing on hold until we actually know what we're responsible for?
Might be, good idea.
The policy was in?
Twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty, right.
Which was after the, the cell tower was approved.
Yeah.
So theoretically, they could be grandfathered into whatever, whatever the deal was, so I, I think we should, but we should see what the town is, you know, if they're in the plans, if they're in the plans, then it seems to me that that would, they would, that would be okay for them. If they're not in the plans, then this is, you know, different ballgame. So why don't you, yes, so how about if we just wait until we see what the town has, and not take a vote on anything tonight?
That's fine, I, I?
Now, Steve, that's?
Yes?
That's what I was trying to get at before, I, I can't imagine that this wasn't contemplated before when we got the original plans. Uh, I was on planning board when it came up, I, I don't remember specifically, but I would be surprised if the, how the power was getting, that wasn't brought up then.
Yeah, I don't have?
You would hope, so.
I don't have any records of, you know, that planning board meeting or anything, so I'm not sure what was discussed.
Well, I think, let us see what we have, actually, maybe you should see what you have, and then we can come back and do it all over again.
No, the, the, the two iss, two issues to me are, one is, you know, the, the tower can't be activated without power, and people are continuing to ask me, where's the, where's?
Right, but I thought Josh's, the question to Josh is, you asked that, Josh, if this was gonna stop the tower from functioning, you said, "No, this is..."
There's a lot of other stuff they're waiting on to happen, I think there's temporary power at the site now, is that right?
If it's temporary, that's?
There is some power at the site, they're waiting for more, um, parts to come in, Verizon needs to run fiber, that, so it's not, it's not, this is not the only thing holding it up.
But, could it be, if all these other things come in, is this the last piece of the puzzle?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, my second item is that the fact that the poles have already been placed kinda makes this seem like it's a little bit absurd that, you know, it's a?
I was surprised to see.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not blaming you, I'm just saying it's a, do it first and ask, ask permission rather than, or ask for forgiveness rather than permission.
Yes, right, yes, yes.
That, that's a bigger concern to me.
So is it the sensitive board, we wanna put this off until we have, this thing comes up?
For, for two weeks, get some answers.
Yes.
How long would it be, that we postpone the decision on this for two, your table is for two weeks?
I'll second that. Okay. Go ahead, Mike, does a roll call?
Mr. Morantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
Thank you for coming. Okay. Tell them not to put the polls in next time.
I don't know if it's some project manager pushing for something to get something done, but like I said, I was surprised that they were in.
Thank you. Okay, we're out of public hearing, okay. Select Board comments. Those, Mark?
I'll just give a couple of updates, 'cause I was, attended a couple of meetings in the past two weeks, the, the biggest one is Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, excuse me, Iron Valley Transit Authority, pardon me, is, is looking at, uh, revising the schedule for dialeride. Dialeride is, they call it tear transit, but people in town know it, is dialeride, our, our residents use dialeride more than anything else that, that we use in town, and the schedule will be actually expanded, will include Saturday scheduling, uh, Saturday availability, the dialeride system is, you know, you have to call and make reservations, people who use it know it, but I think it's important for residents to know that, that they are, there's also, I think, an hour later in some evenings, uh, but check with the PVTA, uh, if, if you do use dialeride or interested in doing that, uh, and, and again, Saturday availability will be there, it will not affect the, I don't know if we call it the city town or the five-town trolley that, that we use at our, uh, adult center, that should not change, but the dialeride at fuel change site, I want to report that primarily.
Thank you. I, I actually have a few comments, one, a, a few comments, again, relating to the speaker who was here two weeks ago. First comment was, gentleman mentioned heat pumps, and how inefficient they may be, and so I just have a statement to make about heat pumps, because MassSave, and I encourage every citizen in this town to take advantage of the MassSave program, MassSave, which I assume has done their homework on, on, um, heat pumps, basically will give up to, to a ten-thousand-dollar rebate for, and this is off their website, for equipment that is used to supplement or replace oil, propane, natural gas, or electric baseboard as a primary heating system. So I believe that, um, the heat pump has come a long way, and, um, given, given MassSave's statement, I think that, uh, as I said, I hope that everyone takes advantage of the MassSave program. One other, um, comment, um, I wanna reiterate that this, this select board makes its policies available, available on fact-based information. We know that seventy-five percent of residents use natural gas, we know there are fears of energy shortage, given the horrific situation in Ukraine. We also know that the proposed EverSource gas pipeline from Long Meadow to Springfield has absolutely nothing to do with increasing the supply of gas to anyone. We know this information because this is what EverSource has told us, they've repeatedly stated their project is not for expansion, concrete gas supplies are more than adequate. EverSource has told us that their forty-two-million-dollar project is only to protect existing gas customers from long-term supply distribution, uh, disruptions, in case something happens to the gas pipeline under the Memorial Bridge. Now, keep in mind that this is the same bridge in two thousand and eleven, actually had a tornado cross it, resulting in no apparent damage to the bridge or the pipeline, and since two thousand and eleven, neither Columbia Gas nor EverSource has requested any repairs to that pipeline, or have reported any leaks in that pipeline. Because the select board creates and modifies its policies based on fact-based information, here are some fact-based information we would like to know from EverSource, but have yet to receive. A, a feasibility study on the possibility of a long-term gas supply disruption actually involving the Memorial Bridge and the Bliss Street Regulation Station, an analysis of alternative solutions to, to the bridge pipeline, a bridge pipeline disaster other than their proposal of creating a new high-pressure pipeline to run through Long Meadow into Springfield, a traffic study of the proposed pipeline routes and the possible disruptions that may occur during construction and subsequent, subsequent maintenance of that line, and an environmental impact statement on the proposed gas meter facility site to be located at Long Meadow Country Club in a residential neighborhood within a third of a mile of the Wolf Swamp Elementary School. An informed community and an informed select board are what we are striving for. As previously stated, the select board intends to keep you, the residents of Long Meadow, apprised of any new information we've received and any of developments regarding this project as they occur. And we can move on to the town manager's report. As previously stated, the select board intends to keep you, the residents of Long Meadow, apprised of any new information we receive and anything of developments regarding this project as they occur. And we can move on to the town manager's report.
Thank you. So for our COVID-19 update, as of Thursday last week, we had 21 reported cases in town. During the last two weeks, there were only 16 PCR tests that had been reported through the Maven MassDPH system. At-home tests that were not reported to the Board of Health are not reflected in these numbers. For a staff update, uh, the town and school IT Director Nick George submitted his resignation. The position's been posted. For the Assistant's Office, we are still trying to fill that position. A comparative salary survey was completed. We're slightly lower than, uh, our comparative communities, but not so far out of that range. We're refresh, refreshing that job posting to see if we can attract more candidates. Positions at the DBW have been posted and we have had interviews for business manager. We have interviews scheduled next week for skilled laborer and jet truck operator in the next two weeks. We will be posting a position of Assistant Town Clerk in the coming weeks. The town clerk's office currently has a vacant part-time position. In the FY23 budget, funds for the part-time clerical position will be combined with additional funds to create a full-time Assistant Town Clerk. We have a DPW Asset Management Plan Grant. At your meeting in September, uh, 7th of 2021, I had informed you that the DPW applied for a DEP Asset Management Plan Grant. And I'm very pleased to say that our application was successful and we received the grant award. Working with Time Bond, DPW Engineering submitted the Stormwater Asset Management Plan Grant application to provide the town with a thorough and representative understanding of the conditions and vulnerabilities of the town's drainage system. This, uh, grant will help us establish a proactive stormwater system maintenance, repair, and replacement program, and will help with our budgeting needs. Twenty-seven projects were funded in the Asset Management Planning, Planning category. Our total project cost is $250,000, with the grant covering $150,000. The remainder will be $50,000 in-kind match and a $50,000 cash contribution. A warrant article for the annual town meeting has been prepared to fund the project. It's a reimbursable grant. The notice to proceed on the project will be issued in December and needs to conclude with a summary report by December 2024. The District Local Technical Assistance Grant, referred to as DLTA. Uh, we applied for a DLTA grant with PBPC, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, to assist in exploring a regional shared conservation agent. PBPC is, accepted our application and we've started conversations with Hampton and Munson to explore what may be possible. Each community has its own unique needs and it's an area that, where we all lack in-house staff to oversee conservation work. As you all know, Long Meadow's been incredibly fortunate to benefit from the time, education, experience of Al Laxo and other members of the Conservation Commission. The DLT concert, conversation is to ensure that we have some succession planning, uh, in place if Al or any members of the ConsCom want to step back from the work that they're doing and serve in more of a, um, traditional committee, commission member role. And the Stormwater Bylaw Regulatory Review. The town's hired PBPC Land Use and Environment Section to conduct a regulatory review for our Stormwater Management Bylaw and, uh, related development code. This work is going to kick off in July. Uh, as you all are aware, Long Meadow has an EPA Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System, MS4, general permit that governs discharge of our storm water into waters of the US. As part of the 2016 permit update, Long Meadow needs to update our stormwater permitting processes and requirements. The code review will highlight the standards that we need to update to come into compliance with this federal permit. PBPC will work with town staff and the Select and Planning Boards and the Conservation Commission in making recommended updates, which would then come forward as bylaw revisions to the 2022 Special Fall Town Meeting. That concludes my report.
Okay. Yes, Tom?
Uh, yeah, a few things, one is, in terms of stormwater, I, I took a hike, my family, uh, and this one cul-de-sac, you know, a dingole, I mean, I couldn't believe how the difference. I mean, I, we used to be able to like just jump across this thing and this thing is like eroded. It's not quite the Grand Canyon, but of Long Meadow, but it's getting there, it's getting there. And so, you know, we really do need to, to, um, look at settling bonds and working things out, um. Otherwise, next thing you know, there'll be beaver coming up that stream, there'll be so much water. I did notice a couple of things, um, in the, um, reports, the local reports. And, um, you know, one is the, uh, emergency, the EMS folks said that their, um, revenue was up 4.5%, which is always a good thing, uh, because we count on, uh, having money coming in to keep those, uh, that equipment and the, uh, ambulances in the top shape. But when they showed the numbers, they said that the, uh, and if I'm reading this right, in February of 2020, they had 155 calls, and in February of 2022, they had 121. So if they get back up to 155, it'll be rolling adult, which is kind of nice to say. And, uh, it was also interesting, they're looking for volunteers, for, for people to help with shelters, uh, for cold weather, people who need warming, but then also, uh, in warm weather. So hopefully folks who are listening will take that to heart and, and maybe you want to volunteer for the fire department. The only other thing that came up is, I went to a meeting for the adult center and, uh, they were asking again about lifeguards, and I know we've talked about that. And, uh, I know some of the lifeguarding classes, the people in those classes already have jobs. So, um, we have to do some recruiting at that early level. I did notice that you're trying to, um, have, have a bit more of a premium for, for folks who are going to work for, uh, recreation this summer, which I think is a good plan. But the adult center, go back around, they, they, they said perhaps adults from the adult center will be using the pool, the green one, you know? So that'll be, um, they'll be in the shallow and fighting over space, I guess, be an interesting take. But, uh, that's it, thank you for your report.
Anything else? Okey-dokey. And move on to, uh, old business, approval of the minutes from, um, from March. What else?
I'll make, I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes from our March 18th.
No, March 7th.
March 7th.
Give a second.
I'll second.
Okay, I, I just want one correction, Kurt Friedman's name is spelled with a C, not a K, his first name. That correction, go ahead.
Well, yes, approved with that correction, uh, yes, with that correction. Give us a, a roll call.
Mr. Marantz?
I'm staying, wasn't here.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Luciza?
I'm staying, I wasn't here.
I don't know if the motion passes.
Technically it doesn't.
We'll just have to put those minutes in limbo and, and, and limbo that.
But we can't pass it, then, I mean, somebody's got, you've got to just take it on faith and vote for it, because otherwise it will not pass.
I, I can, I can vote yes, because actually I did watch the whole meeting.
Watched it?
Yes, yes, okay. I changed my vote from staying to yes. Okay. We are now at, uh, capital plan. And it's up to us to vote on whether we want to accept the capital plan as presented to us or not. Yes, Mark?
So, I'd, I'd like to propose some changes to the capital plan as proposed to us. Some of the, the changes, most of them in fact are recommended by the, by our town manager. But the, the issue, just for people at home, and I'm just trying to pull up the capital plan here, is the recommendations, was that the Capital Planning Committee, uh, recommended $50,000 go toward the window replacement or repair at Center School and did not, uh, choose to fund any money toward our fire truck fund. And I'm, as the, the grandfather, or the father, or whatever, of the fire truck fund, I would like to, uh.
Uh, if you take a look at the warrant, Article 4 of the capital plan, which I assume is what we're voting about, are they not the same thing? The capital plan that's presented by you and what's in the warrant are not the same thing?
Correct, they're not. We have, we have to vote to change it, to get the warrant away, and then submitted it to us.
Okay, that, that's.
Yes, so the, the warrant that's attached to the agenda tonight reflects the changes in this memo that you were speaking of?
Correct.
But you need a separate vote on the capital plan, separate vote on the budget, and then a separate vote on the warrant.
Right, well, okay, but the, okay, the capital plan that's in the warrant, we have not voted on. And we need to make changes to what you presented us to then vote on the warrant.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
I got it.
So based on that, I'm recommending that we eliminate $50,000 toward window replacement or repair and rather allocate that to the fire truck fund and reduce the allocation to pavement preservation from $670,000 to $645,000 and put another $25,000 toward the fire truck fund, which would then fund the fire truck fund at the $75,000 we have historically funded at, and keep the rest of the recommendations of the Capital Planning Committee intact.
And those numbers are what, as on the warrant?
Yep.
And Mark, that's a motion?
Yes.
And I'll, I'll second that motion.
So this is to approve the capital plan as amended, whereas, um, as stated by Mr. Gold.
Correct.
Okay. All right, okay, Mike?
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Luciza?
Yes.
We have a capital budget. Okay, moving on to the regular part.
So at your last meeting, I presented the FY23 budget. Uh, attached to this agenda is a memo explaining the, um, budget shortfall that I had given you at the last meeting, the $200,000. We were able to, um, achieve, meeting that $200,000 gap, um, with the help of the school committee. They adopted a, an amended budget at their meeting last week, they, uh, cut $125,000. And on the town side, we cut 75 out of the, 75,000, out of the salary and wage apportionment line and have supplied a warrant article to fund that wage and classification study with free cash. Uh, so we're, we were able to meet the 1.75% budget goal, uh, and the attached documents to the agenda tonight reflect that.
Is this a point where we applaud?
Very good job.
Yes, Mr. Gold.
So, I, you know, this one, this one's not in your, in your playbook, Steve. So, so, as I looked through the budget, and I had a conversation with our town manager this morning about it, that there are particularly one line item, it's, for those of us who have reference to it, it's the line item 466, which is actually, uh, solid waste disposal fees. And if you will, that's trash hauling. You know, the, for some rea-, how, or some reason, that, it's called sanitation recycling pickup. Uh, it, it was budgeted at $750,000. So I went back to the, to the contract. So the contract we have with waste management for the current fiscal year called for a, a expenditure of $642,776. For the coming fiscal year, which this budget would be for, calls for $661,416. That 661,000 is like 88, 89,000 dollars, less than the budget of $750,000. Okay, I'm not sure how 750 got in here. Now, I will comment that the contract we have with waste management allows for quarterly fuel adjustments. And we all know where that's going, but it's not $87,000. That fuel adjustment traditionally has been 10,000, 12,000, that kind of stuff. And so rather than tax our residents for, based on a budget line item of $750,000, when we have a firm contract at 661, and even if I'm pessimistic and say the, the, the fuel adjustment's 20,000, which it won't be, that's only 700,000 at the most, I'd like to propose that we move $50,000 out of line 466, solid, uh, sanitation, recycling, and pickup. I actually have a potential use for it.
And where would you have it go?
I'd have it go to OPEB. Monday.
From something concrete to something?
You know, and I'm the least concrete OPEB guy, but, but it, it just isn't right to budget for $750,000. We have contracts that say it's going to be, at the most, 700,000.
So Lynn, what is your take on this, uh, you agree with this assessment?
Yeah, as, um, as Mark mentioned, we spoke this morning, uh, the Finance Director and I had an opportunity to discuss it as well. We can support that.
Okay. And in your, and in terms of what you've said there, Mark, your, your best estimate of where this money should go to is OPEB?
And for now, we can have, this is an ongoing discussion for the next, uh, however long we're talking the budget, if we find someplace else. But, but, yeah, I think so. And the reason is because I wanted to make a commitment anyway, that we'd look at OPEB funding in the fall, we're using free cash, and this is a way not to have to do that, or at least guarantee some portion of OPEB getting funded. I mean, it's in, it's been in our policy to fund it, so for me, this is a, I, I, only, only because I, you know, I'm not going to say buy another police car or something, we don't need that. You know, it, it's not like we have, have another use, nor do I want to increase our capital spending, because I don't think we need that right away.
But we are, we are, we are giving money to OPEB already. This is just, this is, this is an additional.
But we were below our policy, correct?
Okay.
Well, is it a motion?
Josh?
Why, why was it W-15 in the budget?
That was, um, submitted by, uh, previous department head.
Okay, and I, I know that, uh, Waste Management had a lot of personnel issues last year. Uh, if they are, uh, have to subcontract work out, or if they have to change their wage structure to cover shifts, is there any wiggle room in the contract for us to be unhooked for that, or, uh, is the contract the contract?
The contract's the contract.
Contract's the, contract.
But is the contract the contract? I guess I'm saying, okay, I, I.
I mean, in, in, in fact, Josh, I think if you look at what we've actually paid, you know, we paid per the contract. I mean, the contract goes in, and I can share it with people, but it shows, you know, says, we will pay X amount of dollars for every two-yard dumpster out of the back of each school. I mean, it, it, it's very, very specific. It's not just a one big lump sum. It breaks it down by roots, by contract, by dumpster, by all that kind of stuff. Contract's the contract, and we've been very successful in maintaining that contract.
And the fuel adjustment is, did you say quarterly or?
Yeah, quarterly.
Yeah, it's, it's based on a, a fuel value that's published, and I don't recall the pub-, but somewhere, that we go back and, and way back when, uh, at the beginning of the contract, Waste Management actually did a fuel study. We use X number of gallons. So they've done that, they know how many gallons they used, we've, we've agreed up on the usage, and that adjustment is based on, it's based on a quarterly average. So it's not, you know, we're not paying, if you will, spot prices, we're paying long-term prices for fuel.
Okay. For this specific item, for the budget, we need a specific motion for this item as, or?
I, I think I'll move, we reduce line 466, sanitation recycling pickup from $750,000 to $700,000.
Are you going to talk about the next phase of it?
Okay, you know, we increased our funding to OPEB by $50,000. And I'm not sure where that is, but that's down one of the bottom lines, I don't know.
I'll second that one.
Any further discussion?
No, I just, I think that's, you know, this OPEB situation, you know, we, we're doing our best to stay ahead of it, and I think we're in a lot better shape than other towns. And, um, you know, I think Mark's choice is a good one to put it there, because, you know, it's just going to, as, as our budget gets tighter in the future, it's just going to save us a lot of trouble and have good funds in the OPEB. So that's why I support this.
So, Steve, I have another comment, if you're, if you're done, we're done with this, or we're going to, we have to vote?
We haven't voted yet.
Yeah, let's vote.
You want to vote?
Yeah, let's vote.
Go ahead, Mike.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakiza?
Yes.
So that is now incorporated into the budget we will eventually vote on. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, you have something else?
Yeah, if I could. Two items, line items down, line 468, which is sanitation disposal fees. That is also based on a contract that we have with the facility in West, I guess it's in Agawam technically, West Springfield, Agawam, where we take our trash to be dumped. And that, again, based on a contract, is way above where the contract is. The variable on this is pounds. We pay, or tons, we pay per ton. And although nobody ever knows the tonnage that we'll use, it's still way, I mean, you can see that we're way over, you know, what we've done in the past. And so I believe that we can reduce that line item also. I'm going to hedge the bet and say buy $25,000 for two reasons. One is because tons are variable, and also because there may be some discussion about our rate. But I think there's $25,000 that we can reduce that line item by, and then also put that money toward OPEB.
Is that the same reasoning for why this is over budgeted?
Because I believe the director put these two together, the recycling and the solid waste disposal costs. I think he did it, put it together. And we also talked about not having to pay for recycling, that there's a net offset on the bills when the recycling market goes up, and they make money on our recyclables, they net our invoice. So I think he was trying to balance both of those at the same time. But if you do take a look at the contracts, and we do have a list of the past few years of solid waste and trash, there is enough money in this one line to cover both the recycling and trash disposal fees. We were advised by our lean from the commission to budget about $25 in waste. It's not a net zero right now in the recycling market, so take our tonnage and multiply it by $25. So taking that amount and the 83.25, we do feel that that's enough money, $25,000. We could take an additional hit there.
Well, actually, I would expect the recycling market to go up, and given that theoretically COVID is loosening up society, we actually might have less waste because people might actually get out of their house and throw their garbage someplace else besides here. Okay. But if you guys are comfortable with this movement...
The only vulnerability that there is, and I just want to make you aware of it, we're comfortable with this, supportive of this, but I do want to make you aware, the company that we currently dispose of our sanitation with is in bankruptcy. And if and when it is bought out or absorbed by someone else, we could have a change in fee structure.
As opposed to them honoring the contracts that already exist?
So I anticipate more on that in the coming weeks.
Okay, another question.
Yes.
So in terms of taking this $75,000 for OPEB, how, what is, compared to what we usually contribute, could you tell me what the difference is?
Sure. So we, our percentage increase this year, the 1.125, would have netted us $611,000. Right now, we're contributing $261,000.
Yeah.
So a difference of about $350,000.
So we're not even getting close, closer.
Yeah, closer. And the 261 is what's budgeted now. That doesn't include the $50,000 you just moved to transfer.
So about half, if we do this for about half of what we have made?
So Mark, that's a motion now?
Yes, I'll make that motion to adjust line 468 by reducing it from $365,000 to $340,000.
I'll second that one. And to send it to OPEB.
And to allocate that money into OPEB, correct?
Question, Lynn, do we have a plan B? Should bank or company get purchased by somebody and say, hey, folks, here's a new ballgame, and, you know, that $25,000 bucks, which they don't know we took out, you know, that's back in, and do we have, can we, I'm not sure we could just suck it back out of OPEB. I mean, what happens, just in terms of, do we have contingency plans?
There's still a cushion in that account from what we've historically been seeing for numbers. And then at that point, depending on how high it was, we'd have to reconvene and have some conversations.
Okay, all right. So we have a motion, second, anything else?
Second the motion.
Okay. Mike?
Mr. Marantz?
Yep.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakiza?
Yes.
Anything else on the budget here, Mr. Gold?
That's quite enough, isn't it?
No, how many line items? We've got 500 items here. Any other discussion on the budget? Then we need a motion to approve the budget as presented and amended.
How will we approve the budget as amended?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just, I know that this year, compared to other years, has been a tougher time to come to this conclusion. But I just, I really think, you know, I want to thank the school department in their efforts to make adjustments, and I appreciate all the department heads and Lynn's work to get the budget down. It's really, it's a big accomplishment this year because I know there's a lot more expenses. And we just try to plan, not how things are going to be in the future, but, you know, it's a really, you know, commendable job. I think everyone else is going to be happy with this also, and I'm more than willing to vote for it.
No, I think that the hard work is definitely appreciated, and it probably will get easier as time goes on. So, you know, it's, we appreciate it muchly. Okay, anything else? Okay, Mike, give us a vote.
Mr. Marantz?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lakiza?
Yes.
Okay. And this is the budget that will go to finance committee, and they either vote it up or down, correct? They don't, they don't...
Or recommend or not recommend. Right.
But they're not going to do on line item 314.
They can suggest it, but it's, you have to come back to us.
All right, very good. Okay, now let's move on to the warrant.
So late today, I uploaded a revised warrant. We've been making changes just to make sure that we have everything together. And part of that includes a memo that is attached to the warrant conversation. I don't know if you want to jump into that yet, or if you want to start going through the warrant itself. Happy to do it either way.
What, your statement that is attached to the warrant?
Sure. And I do have the department heads here tonight to answer specific questions, as this is, you know, a pretty detailed topic. So the memo that was attached regarding the warrant is an update on Reynolds Pool and Greenwood Park Pool. DPW has been getting the pools ready to open this for the season, and we've, some discoveries have been made. Reynolds Pool, we have determined drains directly into Cooley Brook, and the drainage system at the pool needs to be adapted to drain into the sanitary system. As it's presently plumbed, the discharge of chlorinated backwash water would be an illicit discharge under our MS4 permit. And I should add, this memo has been prepared by Tim Keen, the town engineer, and Nick Drogantis, the facilities director. Both of them are here tonight. They're both sharing DPW director duties while that position is vacant. So once I get through this memo, if you have questions that are specific to them, they're here to be able to help answer. One of the other issues with Reynolds Pool is the ejector pit pump system would need to be installed to rectify the above drainage, the above described drainage issue that I just mentioned. Work had started in 2019 on this, but it had not been completed. So we're not, we need to revise, refresh where we were with that and figure out why the work wasn't done and get an understanding of what it's going to take to complete it. To compound on that, the electrical load of the pool facility is maxed out. So we would need the electrical service to be updated to accommodate that pump for the sanitary tie-in. And then lastly, the pump room itself may constitute a hazard. The room's below grade, and it's equipped with ventilation louvers and a fan, but both of those are also below grade, and this is where the chemicals are stored, and the pump room, pump itself. So if there were some noxious gas present in the room, it would be heavier than air. There's no way to vent the space, which could create a safety issue. DPW understands that the pump room and chemical storage is inspected annually by town personnel. However, the pool's not been operational for two years, so the conditions in the room have deteriorated, and so further investigation needs to be done to determine what would be appropriate to make some modifications to that room. We don't know what that repair cost would be at this time. Right now, items one, two, and three that I spoke about are estimated to be roughly $150,000. The other complicating factor to this is that the earliest, if we were to decide to move ahead with these repairs, the earliest we could start that would be May 11th, and we do not believe that we could have all of that work done to get the pool open in June. Regarding Greenwood Pool, in the summer of 2021, so last summer, we found out that the pool had been leaking, or it's been leaking. We estimate the leak to be about 15,000 gallons a day. A liner would be needed in that pool, which has no liner right now, to stop the leaking. A liner for a pool that size is estimated to cost about $150,000. There had been prior work done to stop some leaking, but unfortunately, it didn't fully fix the problem, so it's persisted. Another recommendation is to install a cover on Greenwood Park Pool, which will help evaporation and minimize debris that is collected in the pool. Cover's estimated at $30,000. Some, at some point, the recommendation would be made that Reynolds Pool should also have a cover, but we're not there yet. And then we're also further reviewing how the water at Greenwood is discharged, but we don't have a full picture on that at the moment. So the most pressing issue is the leak. I will say that the pool did operate last summer with a known leak. The 15,000 gallons a day is estimated at about $80 worth of water loss a day. So I wanted to highlight these issues because, one, they're expensive, two, it has impacts on the operation this summer, and three, I think it warrants a public conversation.
A new liner, I assume, could be put in before a pool was open?
It would be, it would be great if that could happen. With the delays that we're seeing everywhere, I'm very, I'm doubtful that that would be achieved, but...
So we're looking possibly at having no pools open when they should be open?
Well, as I mentioned, Greenwood operated last summer with the leak. So we could open it, knowing it's leaking, and just know that that's happening, and we're going to make repairs to it in the fall. Or if we don't feel comfortable doing that, then, no, we likely wouldn't open.
So the water loss, I mean, you know, there's a difference between the leak and evaporation. Is that total when they look at how much water loss?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, okay, so if we did cover it, we could reduce that loss, you know. Do we have any other pools in town that have covers?
Not public. Given the amount of rain we had last summer, I think it was a dead wind for evaporation as opposed to anything else.
You know, I believe that the operation of the pools, particularly Greenwood Pool, is an integral part of it, varies here, and, you know, we run a day camp at Greenwood Center, and I think would certainly impact the enrollments, if not the experience of the day camp there, or I should say, the experience, if not the enrollment of day camp. I think we need to operate Greenwood clearly. You know, I think the town manager has a plan for ordering the liner, getting it as quickly as we can, and installing it as quickly as we can, but I think we need to operate the pool. It'd be, given the summary I just heard that is potentially illegal, if we operate Reynolds Pool, we need to have a pool in town to operate. And so, you know, I think we need to move, you know, my opinion is that we need to move forward with operating Greenwood Pool and move as quickly as we can toward getting a liner for that pool.
Another thing, I know camps that have not had access to a place to swim for kids in the summer have had to bus kids. And if you start looking at having buses take kids from Greenwood to the high school pool or something like that, you know, it might end up being more expensive with the price of fuel.
Unless you got to operate the high school pool.
Then you have to operate the pool, you have to do all that, yeah.
Josh?
Yeah, I agree with Mark. I think we need to have Greenwood operating at the very least. I did have a question, Lynn, I emailed you, but it was late today today. Is there any environmental effects from the leaking of the pool at Greenwood that we need to know about, structurally or environmentally, just from the chlorine going into the ground?
And I think your question, if I remember it, I think I saw your email, and it also asked if there was potential sinkhole or erosion from the leak.
Yeah.
I don't know if we know the full extent of that at the, right now.
At Reynolds Pool?
Greenwood.
Greenwood? Yeah, we're still looking at that.
Yeah, well, that, that's the town engineer speaking. We don't know the full extent of that yet. But I do believe this is not a situation that just occurred overnight. I think it's been leaking for several years, if not a dozen years. But we're, the group that's involved at this point is not willing to let that continue without coming up with solutions to fix it. So it could have been, it could have happened for many, many years, and so it's unknown at the point, at this point, right now.
This is very great, but when the leaking pool, it brought to mind the condos in Florida, the condo collapsed last year, but the pool was leaking, it was one of the first signs. I know this is a very different situation, but that's what brought it to my mind. I'm probably overthinking this, but that's why I brought it up. But I do, I think that it's really important to have a pool in town, and we set pool memberships, and it's a shame if we can't have both open, but Reynolds sounds like it needs a lot of work done, but it is important to the people in town to have Greenwood open. And if we, oh, that brought me to my next question. If a liner does come in, how long would it take to install, and how long would Greenwood need to be down, out of service, or would that be something we just wait, if we'd already opened the pool, we'd just wait till after the season's over?
I believe the plan would be, if the pool was already up and operational, we would wait until the season was over. We only have about 10 weeks, roughly, so it really wouldn't make sense to close it, to fix it, and then try to get it reopened again.
Yes, Mark.
I, you know, I'm not a pool person, but my guess, question would be, do we, do we understand anything about the current leak? I mean, is there a liner in it that's torn, that we can put in temporary repairs, that we do something to try to mitigate this leak, to, you know, granted, you know, you hate to put good money after a bad liner and then say we're going to replace it anyway, and if the repair costs you more than $80 a day, maybe you don't want to do it. But nevertheless, you know, is that something we've considered?
There is no liner in that pool right now.
So it's leaking through the, through the concrete? And we've been there, I think, there's, there's no repairing of the concrete, so.
Shane, there's basically, since this would have to be a town meeting vote, which is the 10th of May, there's no way this liner's going to get into the pool before we can open it, except for that...
Likely not, correct.
Because we, so we can't order until the money's...
May 11th.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. And so we are, right, we're taking a chance that, you know, this will not become a catastrophic leak as it's suffering, you know, right. a catastrophic leak as mid-summer, you know, right. But I know, I joined the crowd and saying, you know, having this pool open is, is important to the town and should be done, but it's, it doesn't, it's not risk-free, given the amount of water that's been leaking out of this thing already. And I would agree, it's not brand-new. When the pool, so right now, the pool is, is empty and you, and it's, it's filled in the, when the season begins.
Correct.
And so theoretically, if we have a liner there with the cover over the summer, the wintertime, the water would not have to be refilled every... Okay. All right. So do we need, we, there's nothing we can do about this now, except say, we want to support the warrant article for the liner?
Right, I wanted to draw it to your attention. The draft warrant tonight has the articles for Greenwood. It does not have articles for Reynolds' Pool.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, it was like the possibility of Reynolds' Pool opening this summer, like zero?
Yeah, correct. We, the cost to remedy this is unknown at this time, and to get the work done in time would be impossible.
Steve, the, the bigger question for me is, can we find $150,000 now that we pay back to the town at town meeting so that we can get this thing on order as quickly? And, and again, I don't know if we could order it now, it still won't come in until July 15th, which makes it, makes it a little value. But if that, that's the possi, a possibility, that may be an action we can take. You know, we, we found, we found the, the problem, we've identified it, let's see if we can find some money that's in our current budget. Now, I don't know how you go about appropriating $150,000 with a town meeting form of government that we have, but we've got a finance committee, who's got some money available, and we've got some other people with some...
We ask our, we ask our CFO.
Okay.
Which, yeah, he has closets, wears, he's got expressors there.
Did you inherit that, that money tree from Paul?
Yes, I did.
Yeah.
It's collecting dust, actually, over there. I mean, we can, we can take a look, we'll have, we'll have to take a look and get back to it.
I think the, the, the first step is, for the folks in the back here, our town engineers, is, does it help if we could, say, order it at the end of this week, as opposed to wait until May 15th to order? I, because if the answer is no, let's not go through the financial, you know, jump, you know, gyrations, but if the answer is yes, I think it's worth it, right?
Right, my expectation would be, given supply chain issues, I would be astounded.
No, but maybe, maybe there's a liner.
Maybe some guy has some liner stuck in his garage, but I, I would keep expectations incredibly low.
I, I hear you, but the, not zero.
I think our bigger problem is going to be finding $150,000. Like Jen said, we can look, but that's a lot of money to try to find.
Barry, did you say you had $150,000?
She lets me pay back the salaries and benefits late, then yes.
She does, she, there's, there's a few hundred thousand dollars.
The problem is, it's not late, it's next year, it's next fiscal year. That, it, it, there's a difference between late this year and...
That's okay with the law, maybe Jennifer allows it.
Like I said, I think there's a lot of answers, and then I just turn it over to you, but I, I wouldn't give up on it unless we know that there's no sense, because it, it's, there's a value, there's a benefit, and if it's possible, see what happens.
So you could let us convene, figure that out, we could come back to you April 4th and let you know.
Also, probably, in terms of not spinning your wheels too much, is whoever deals in big pool liners, you might want to call them up and say, "Hey, we have an order for you." And they say, "Oh, that'd be great, you know, wait till next February before it shows up."
That'd be part of our determination, right?
Yeah, I think the first call is just that, once, Steve, right?
Yeah, okay, all right. So let's see what...
That doesn't mean we shouldn't go forward with this, I think we're, one way or another, we've got to appropriate.
Well, yes, it's, it's a town meeting warrant article for the, the liner, and it's a separate one for, as long as it has, suppose, the $30,000 for the cover, which you are...
I'm, I'm less supportive of that, I understand.
Is that more of that money down?
Or just don't spend it, you know, sometimes.
My bigger concern is the liner.
Yep, yep, okay. Well, do we want to withdraw the 30, well, we'll get there, I, I would agree, the first thing is the liner, let's see if we can come back.
I guess I'd support it to the point that, that if, if we found that we could, you know, get...
Get our handle.
Get the money, get the liner, because this must be a special order anyways, because it has to fit that pool. And, and if that could happen, then we could even have an emergency meeting to vote, vote that in, if we had to. I mean, could we vote that approval prior to...
The implication is, we should, we wouldn't have to, because the money's, we'd just be moving it, I mean, if...
General, general do her magic, and there it'll be.
It'll be done.
If it's available.
You know, I think that, that would be another thing, is we could have a meeting, it's not a big...
If there's no money, there's not, I think we could give a...
Well, no, we can't, we can't move the budget, we can't increase the budget, that's for sure.
There's no money, or there's no liner, I mean.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay, so come back, we'll, we'll, by the 4th, we should know more. Okay, great. Okay.
I'd like to propose we go through the warrant article by article, just approve them or discuss them.
Yes, I think that's the way to go, one by one, lots of roll call votes.
Maybe to do step, maybe we can just get through two or three and then...
We have a consent decree for the...
No, no, but we can adopt them, but...
Yes, that's true, that's true.
Unless you see that right on your end?
The first couple are pretty easy.
If they want to join us at the table, they're...
Well, I just told them I didn't think they needed to stay, but it was...
Oh, okay, no, no, well, I don't know, you know, that's fine, if you can ask a question. I'd rather them go call, call, see if they can get a pool liner.
And any pool company's open now, see if that's worth a shot, you know?
Appreciate it. All right.
Thanks, guys.
Do we, do we know, I'm gonna assume Article 1's got no problems, that's the gold weight.
Right.
Jennifer, do we know if Article 2, it's really $100,000?
It, as far as we know, the $100,000 will get us to the end of the year, based on invoices that are outstanding and encumbered to NPOs.
Wow.
How much was originally budgeted for example?
125.
And that's been steady every year?
That's the minimum required by law to budget.
Because this wasn't, I mean, I, this was an icy year, this wasn't a big snow year.
Salt and, and maintenance equipment, like parts.
Okay. Let's do one and two. We need to, we actually need to vote on every one of these things, is that correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Well, you could, I mean, can you take it as a group?
We can, if we go through them and, and go through them and then have one vote.
The entire, the entire...
If we modify them as we go.
Okay, if we modify them as we go, or...
If there's modifications to be made.
Or remove all, or whatever.
Right, right.
Fine. So we're good, up to number three, which is active recreation assessment. This is your baby, right Lynn?
It is my baby, yes. So the first idea had been to fund this with the auction proceeds, however, though that money has been used to shore up the interest, that did not come to fruition. So we are putting forward this warrant article to fund it out of free cash. It'd be an active recreational areas conditions assessment of all of our athletic facilities, excluding Wolf Swamp, because that's gonna be brand-new. But it would look at all the parks, all the playgrounds, all of the pools, all of the tennis courts, basketball courts, and come up with maintenance schedules and prioritization for projects that need to happen, and give us just an overall kind of master plan for all of those active recreation areas that we could then use to prioritize projects.
And, and how do we come up with a number of $100,000?
Uh, we are modeling it similarly to one that was done in the town of Agawam, city of Agawam. I'm not sure what you could get, city. It was done five years ago, and it was $76,000. So this is our best estimate.
And, and who does this?
Uh, there's several companies that do this.
Does maintenance of the fields fall under this?
It would, yes.
Okay, because, yes. So in terms of how they're fertilized and all, this good stuff is all part of that, because one of my concerns would be, after spending all the money on Wolf Swamp, for the protection of the kids, to then put all sorts of poisonous materials on top of the grass, which is not gonna protect the kids, I would hope that, you know, as maintenance is evaluated, that they take a look at alternatives to just dumping all this stuff on. And then if that's part of the study, that's great. One other thing, in terms of, as we go down the warrant articles, we do get to the skateboard warrant article, which I assume, since it doesn't exist at this moment, I mean, is this, is there, I don't, it seems to me that the skateboard is put in the cart before the horse with this, with this kind of study we're doing. I mean, I'm not, are they compatible? Let's have a skateboard park and let's do this assessment, I mean, it's something...
No, they're, they, I wouldn't say they're compatible. I did send a letter asking the community preservation committee to pause funding on projects that were for active recreation areas to allow us time to do this study, so that we weren't modifying active recreation areas while also trying to study what our baseline is and what maintenance should be in the future. They did honor that request for all projects except the skate park. So I, I wouldn't say that they are compatible.
Okay. All right. Any, any problems with that, folks, on, on this article? Okay.
This is the wage and classification study that I spoke about in, during the budget conversation, so moving it out of the FY '23 budget and into a warrant article to fund through free cash, which also allows us to start the study earlier than July 1st.
Would this impact DPW hiring as well? Yes, everybody, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Lynn, when, just a quick question, you, when, when you said you cut this from the budget, was there a, a reduction in spending of a budget line? I couldn't find the budget line.
That was from the schools, right, is this offset the school now?
No, it was on the town side, and it was, it's the salary apportionment line. Do you know what...
It's on the main, it's on the main summary, it's not part of the operation budget, so that...
Okay, that's why, it's not part of the operational budget.
The, the three-pager, that has the top...
Number 51, line 51.
Okay, thanks, that's all I want to know.
Okay.
Thank you.
So we're good, everyone's good on five? No, five is a new one, five is the town cover, the pool cover.
Correct.
And if you're not, if this is a high priority for you, and, I mean, do we really want this on the, on warrant article? We've got a say mark here.
No, I was gonna say no, and, and I'll give you the reason no, is that, that I, I went through and tried to add up all the, from available funds, which is free cash, and it added up to $511,000. And Jen's summary, or Lynn's summary at our budget hearing last time, said we had $500,000. It's close, but it's too close for my, I mean, I think that we're already spending close to what we've got in free cash, so if we can take some money out, it'd mean, mean for me to do that, and I think we ought to.
Any other thoughts on this $3,000 bucks?
I, I don't know if anyone can see me at this point, but the, the line there, that the liner will be preserved, so obviously, this would be put in after the liner, how many effective years would a cover add for the liner? And if we don't put on a liner the first year after the, I'm sorry, a cover after the first year, is that going to affect our long-term use?
I don't know the answers to those questions, I can find that out.
That's a really good question, whether covers affect life of the liner.
Well, yeah.
As I understand it, talking with the facilities director or assistant directors, the liner, they need to leave water in the pool to keep the liner infrastructure in place, and if they keep the water in the pool, they can't drain it.
Right.
And so they have to put the cover over it.
Right.
So that cover helps public safety.
Well, I can certainly see for the wintertime, I mean, they want to do that, because you see that, right?
Yeah.
But the other side is that water in the pool could thaw, and so it could be a safety hazard if there's some cover.
Well, that's, they, they, basically, I think literally put antifreeze in the water, it doesn't freeze. So, okay, but in the meantime, if and when this liner comes, that then, at that point, probably having a cover is gonna be worth spending the money on.
Yeah, if you're not gonna, if you're not to do it this year, then I agree with, yeah.
We can always wait till fall.
And the other thing that we did today, as I said, the warrant was a work in progress. We did look at those free cash numbers, it was an error that the, a warrant article that was prepared was funding the liner with free cash, that thought had been to fund it with borrowing. So you'll see it fixed further on in the warrant here.
From free cash to borrowing?
Yes.
What, the cover?
The liner, not the cover.
Was the liner part of the $500,000, okay?
Yes, it was.
Oh, okay.
So are, do we need to take a vote to get rid of this article?
Not yet, let's just say we're gonna eliminate it, and that's, that'll be one of the votes.
We're agreed that Article 5 will not be part of the articles?
I'm not ready to eliminate it, no. I mean, I would need to know more about how it protects the liner. I, I've never had a pool, but I know I see people with pools, they have water in it, they have an inner tube, and they have a cover. And the majority of pools I see have that.
Yes. We also stand as much chance as getting a pool cover in time, mainly because it's the end of the season, as we do a liner.
But Tom, I think you see that for, for private pools, but not very many municipal pools have a cover.
They drain them, the municipal ones.
Yes.
That's true.
But if you have a liner, it's different. A lot of municipal pools don't have liners, they have concrete, right? I mean, so, so that's the, so I, I would need to know that, before I took this out, I'd need to know more information about liners and covers, and if it's, you know, we wouldn't want to jeopardize the length, the year, the length of time that the liner's gonna work, and you wouldn't, yeah, you just, wouldn't anything to rip that liner.
So what you could potentially do, if you wanted to have some of these answers before you voted, is if you're, if, Finance Committee's meeting March 30th, if you wanted to schedule a meeting right before that, we could address these outstanding ones.
Well, yeah, can we, can we at town meeting pull the warrant article?
Sure.
Yeah, so we, we can wait till town meeting, say, we're not, we're not putting this article on the warrant.
I know this isn't the last time we're gonna look at this.
No, but you're right, Steve, I mean, we can, we have several meetings, if we're at town meeting, we can always say, we're gonna, we're gonna vote to take no action on Article 5, right? If we don't need it, that, that's perfect, good answer.
Yeah, I'm doing that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll leave it in?
For temporarily.
We're good for paying last year's bills?
I, just a comment, we will be asked, and so I think it's worth adding in the explanation what the bill is for, it says DPW-related expenses.
It's like 45 random items.
Then why don't you put that in?
Yeah.
Okay, 45 random items ranging from...
Yeah.
Three bucks to $82, just, somebody's gonna ask.
Not, not if you don't encourage it.
No, but I, I know who it's gonna be, I can maybe add names if you want.
We can add more information.
Excellent. This, Article 7 IT capital equipment.
I, I think it's the same thing, I think we need to put down what the, what the equipment is. I mean, in the past, we've said it's servers, or we've said it's PCs, or we've said it's switchgear, or something like that, but something, again, somebody's gonna stand up and ask, it's purchased the lease, I think it's worth, even if we gotta add a couple of sentences of what it is, I think it's worth doing that.
Well, actually, shouldn't that be someone from the school department, since it's...
No, but it should be written, I'm saying it should be written, let them write, then, but it should be, for the IT department, but, but it...
Yeah, somebody ought to say this, this is what we're doing with this money.
Right.
In, in Article 7, generally, in the first part of the article, it gives you a dollar figure, and this one, in the explanation, it says $84,300, but I don't understand why it isn't in the four years at $84,700.
Because it doesn't need to be by state law.
Oh, it's, it doesn't need to be in the...
The town has to approve any lease over 10 years, I think, Jen, or is it?
Five.
Five years, something like that.
Oh, so it's, we're approving the lease, but school departments...
Yeah, but we're, we're approving the lease, but it... Yeah, but we're approving the lease, but it, on any given year, we're only spending money that's in the school department's budget, that eighty-four three oh seven.
Basically, eighty-four is coming out of the school department's budget.
Right. But the town's gotta, by statute, just approve the structure.
The office is approving the lease.
Should I wonder if it should say something about the school department's plan of entering this, and, and, you know, that this, this money annually will come out of their budget? I don't know if we need to say that. It might just make it easier for voters to know exactly.
It does say the school department's planning on entering to this grease lease, you know, that eighty-four thousand bucks, so. But it is, I think it's incumbent on them to say what they're using it for. I agree with that.
Well, it's just people, you know, because it says to see if, I don't know, we, it might be better to separate it and say it's coming from their budget, from their annual budget. I don't know. Well, I would, that's what I would say. I don't know if people agree. And in the explanation, just say from the school department's annual.
My take is it's always better to add more in the explanation than less, until you go to an extra page in the warrant.
Yeah, no big deal.
Yeah. And we're gonna go quicker on the voting.
Yep.
Thank you.
Article eight?
Yeah, in terms of Article eight, I, I'm fine with this. This is just to, to approve the Chapter ninety money. The question is, we, we, it sounds like we've ordered it in a way that requires a two-thirds vote, when it shouldn't require two-thirds vote to, to spend Chapter ninety money. And it's only because in the past, we borrowed in the anticipation because the state didn't pay until September, October, and we wanted to do this. I'm not sure we could do this, this summer, even if we wanted to. And so do we really want to go out there and say we want to borrow the money to do this when they're a year behind in paving? And, and it turns this into a majority vote? I guess that's, that's the question. If we anticipate trying to do this in July and August of this year, it's a sure bet the state's not gonna reimburse us until after that time. And so we do want to borrow the money. But if we're not gonna get to this this year, do we want to go through the, the charade of borrowing and saying we're gonna borrow? Or do we even want to borrow money and incur debt that we're not gonna spend till the spring of twenty twenty-three?
Well, we have to, I assume we have to show the state we spent the money before we get reimbursed.
No.
No?
No.
No, usually.
Not for Chapter ninety.
I think you do.
No, because you can't, historically, we used to not spend the money till we got it.
Um.
Chapter ninety's not a reimbursement program. It's a, it's a grant program.
All right.
I'm almost certain, we never, this borrowing has only been the last three or four years that, because the state's been so terrible about paying Chapter ninety money.
Well, let's, let's check it out. Let's make sure that.
Yeah, I mean, I may be wrong, but I don't believe you've got a
Because I would think that the state.
Because, I mean, the number's four hundred seventy-one thousand six ninety-nine. They're saying, here's the money. You know, if you spend more, go for it. But you don't have to prove that you spent it to get it.
No, but we don't, I mean, we could spend anything we want, say.
No.
No, no, you can't spend anything you want.
We do have to provide a lot of documentation to show what we spent it on.
Right.
But I always thought it was reimbursable.
So let's find out, okay? Let's, because I would agree, if we don't have to do two-thirds, all the better. But if we have to, if we have to spend it first, then that's that. Okay, so we'll, although we'd like to know that before it shows up at the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent certain, but I will find, I'll get the documentation.
Leave it the way it is, but if it, if it's different.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. We're likely not going to get to it. And anything, what, way it would work is we build out our road resurfacing program based on what we have for capital and Chapter ninety. But we would always spend down the capital and submit for the reimbursement, because we've already spent it off the capital. Are you following me? And then it's never an issue. That's generally what communities would do when they have, or, because four hundred seventy-one thousand dollars is not gonna barely do one road.
But for, for fifteen years I was on, or, you know, for the first ten years I was on the board, we didn't have any supplemental money. We just spent Chapter ninety money and nothing more. And we still got stuff. That's, that's the basis by my comments. It was only Richard Cross who told us we started, we needed supplemental funds. Before that, if you go back, it was just, we spent Chapter ninety money and barely got, of course, that's when money could actually do some paving now.
Yeah, yeah.
Four hundred sixty thousand dollars to do a mile of roads.
Okey-dokey. Article nine.
This is for, yeah, this is for the L project? It's referred to as the L project.
Just a, a question. It would have, assuming a negative here, but assuming that ever source hazard pipeline constructed, this, it's very conceivable that the route they want to put this thing on is over this land, some of this land. Does that make any difference whatsoever? For, with us, you know, does it make?
There'll be a moratorium on paving, but utilities have ways of not complying with that.
No, the, the issue has been if we pave a road within, I think, three years, they dig it up, they gotta repave the whole road. You, you can't necessarily stop them from doing it.
No, but just.
Make them repave the road. But this is, this has nothing to do with repaving. This is really taking the parcel so we can make modifications to the, to the road, to the corners and to the, all that other stuff. This is easements.
Right. And so we make these modifications, and I'm not sure what putting in the pipeline would do to those modifications. And just, since it's on.
Wait, can you scroll down?
There we go.
I want to see if this has a, needs an explanation.
This is the only one. We don't have an explanation on yet.
Okay, we're all looking forward to it. Okay, Article ten.
So for Article ten, my first question is, it's, it's lower down the warrant than most of the time our budget has been. I'm just wondering why, not that it makes any difference. We can have people stay. But this is my personal issue is, I was told that we needed to include the statement that set the salary and compensation of the moderator and the select persons. And it had already said that, and this doesn't. It's always said that, it doesn't.
Yep.
And it, so it needs to say in the beginning, see if the town will vote, fix the fiscal year twenty twenty salary and compensation of the moderator at, I think it's been a thousand dollars.
Yep.
And the select persons at two thousand each, and to provide a reserve fund and to improve the fiscal year twenty twenty-three operating budget.
That's the way Article ten should read it?
Yes.
I believe so.
Yeah, and I think you, I, I agree with you. We should move it up. We should move the article for the L project down, and the budget should go before that. I'm trying to remember what was just before all of that, too.
Free cash stuff.
Yeah, so generally the free cash stuff is at the front.
And Chapter ninety.
Chapter ninety we could move down.
And the lease.
And the lease could move down, too. Okay. If, if that's how you want it, we'll do all the free cash items first.
Well, that's the big thing people want to vote on, is the budget.
Right.
Yep, budget.
I think it was usually around five or seven.
Yeah, it's, it's up there somewhere.
Yeah.
Something like that. Yeah, Goldweight always seems to be number one.
Yes, that's always number one.
But I, but I, I'd like to, as part of this motion is that we revise Article ten to include the, what I think is that normalized
Yep.
statement of setting the, setting the budget and salaries and compensation.
I think people want to vote on it before they vote on a pool cover.
Um, from what I've been told, the way it's structured is usually the free cash articles are before the budget.
Because that's money that you already have.
Yeah.
And then you're raising money, and then it's.
Exactly.
Yeah.
All right.
But it is.
Although, aren't, aren't the select board salary and town moderator salary in this, in the budget?
But, but, but the word, the state wording mandates that you list them separately. We, you weren't in town, but we used to actually go through a budget that said, I move budget line items eight to twenty-seven. And then somebody moved, I move line items twenty-eight through. And then the state came by and said, you can do them in, in sections. And now we actually have it like community preservation, or community services and public safety. But the state law still requires that you separately set in, in your introduction here, the salary of the moderators and the, and the select board, select board members.
Yeah, I just noticed the language is in the drive. It just didn't make its way into the draft. Yeah. So I'm just not gonna move that language.
Without it, you can't get paid, Steve.
Hey, when I was chair of the Finance Committee, the Finance Committee recommended against paying the board of select boards, so.
Well, if you want to do that, that's a different story.
And we lost on town meeting floor. Okay, so Ted is gonna move up and include moderator and select board salaries.
We'll make the adjustments in the budget numbers based on what you voted tonight. So we'll do that.
Right.
Before it's final.
Yeah, okay, great. Number eleven, wage sub.
So this is a standard one every year. The number this year is higher to reflect collective bargaining and the hopeful implementation of a waging classification study.
Is the study part of it? I thought the study was separate.
The funding, the actual study is separate. Implementing the outcome of the study is included in this.
Okay, and everyone's good with the verbiage on this one?
Yeah.
Okay. Twelve?
I, I just question that it says transfer from available, it says raise or inappropriate or transfer from available funds. We don't have this on any transfers from available funds. It's all from raise and appropriate.
Right.
So we don't need that phrase in here. And I think that just confuses people.
Yep.
Generally, we have money from free cash and from, but.
As a multi-fund, yep.
Right. I mean, it's kind of a boilerplate, but this year we're not using any, any free cash. So I'd suggest we leave that.
So this, this includes all these, the, the two additions to the fire truck.
Yeah, and the numbers would, it includes the fire trucks already, right, we'll be voting on, yeah.
Okay.
And it, and it removed the twenty-five thousand from pavement. And so those numbers are, are as we've adjusted.
Let's say, let's say, well, reconstruction is down, and some of the sidewalks in this town.
But we'll.
There it goes. Article thirteen, you have two hundred thousand bucks here for the liner. And you were talking a hundred and fifty just moments ago.
Yeah, two hundred was in this draft. I don't know if, Jen, you got that number somewhere else?
Um, that was the estimate from Nick, one eighty-nine. So I wasn't sure with, with the one fifty where it got edited.
Okay, yeah, the memo they gave me said one fifty, but the quote was one eighty-nine?
So if you can come up with one fifty, that won't do the job. So since we've been throwing around the number one fifty, this number says two hundred, do we want to keep two hundred in, assuming that?
Worst thing we can do is appropriate an insufficient quantity, because then we just wasted that money and didn't get the job done.
Right, but then in terms of asking, Jen will come up with a hundred fifty thousand bucks if we want two hundred thousand.
Well, now she's gotta come up with a hundred eighty-nine thousand bucks.
Um, well, we will send this language to bond council, right, to make sure that they're okay with it. Because I wanted to read loosely enough that if they, if there was a repair that needed to be made in order for them to put the liner in, they could do that.
That would be, okay.
Like if there was, you know, jagged concrete or something that would pierce the liner.
In the description, where it says it's, it's losing water at the
Yep.
eighty dollars a day, I wonder if we should say, lost water in the summer season, or just say, I mean, I guess they would know it's only filling in the summer.
Sure, we can emphasize.
You know, it's just, you know, remind them, it's something to use in the summer, that's all. We need it. Hopefully they'll get that.
Also, the motions would have the exact amounts for, the language for equal or greater sum will be taken out from the motions.
Right, they all still, right.
Okay, Article fourteen. None of this has to do, there was an article the last town meeting where we wanted to move money out of one of our, of these funds, and the Finance Committee said, don't do it. That's, that's not what this is about, is it?
Correct. My recollection is that we were taking money out of the sewer retained earnings fund to lower the sewer rates.
Right.
I still think that was an error by the Finance Committee, but nevertheless, this is one-time expenditures of what they consider one-time money.
And it's for the appropriate, okay, got it. So that, what happened then is not what's happening. Okay, fine and dandy. Fourteen.
But is, are people gonna complain about the thirty thousand dollars for the roof? I mean, how big is this thing, this, this building? Proprietation? Is it thirty thousand?
It's a concrete, it's a concrete bunker, is the best way to put it.
Yeah.
You know, and it's not like the roof of a house.
Oh, it's a socket, you know, a socket.
It's a concrete bunker. We gotta, things all deteriorated to, you know, kind of, you're gonna have to pour concrete, put down all kinds of stuff, rebar and stuff like, it's a major job.
And we can do an educational video on it, too. We plan to do those for warrant articles that need further explanation.
Because people may want to know why it's that much.
Probably want to see a picture.
Right. Just, just remember, if this doesn't pass and the source roof collapses, everybody sewers back up to the house. So that's, that's, that's the downside.
You clog up to the mic and make sure you tell everybody. Okay, fifteen.
Yep.
Same issue as, okay. And now we're into the borrowing, borrowing. Lots of borrowing articles coming up.
Sixteen, Steve, we're okay with? That's a stormwater utility.
Right. I mean, it's right, I mean.
This is the water work. Sixteen is water.
Oh, I'm looking at, sixteen I have, is this the?
There was, because Kenmore Drive was taken out in the version you have. So it, we reduced the warrant articles by one.
Okay, Kenmore Drive is out?
Yep.
So, okay, so, so sixteen was shaving off.
Yep.
Okay.
Well, fifteen on what I got.
Fifteen was shaving off.
Yeah.
Fifteen, fifteen on that, on that, that's on the screen, was shaving off. So sixteen and seventeen are, are part of, what's gonna go on along Meadow Street?
Correct.
So I, I have a question. It, the, it is raise and appropriate money for what's going on along Meadow Street. But I think the, historically, we put in these, or we, if we have them, we should, principal and interest to be paid from the water stabilization fund, because that's our, this is a water project and not a general fund project.
I looked back at, I think it was May fourteenth of twenty nineteen, and added that last sentence at the bottom where it says, and to be paid in the first instance from water receipts, and each of them, you know, respective of where they're coming from, say that. So water or sewer or stormwater.
Oh, okay. And just, just in terms of language, in terms of raise and appropriate, in terms of all the town meetings, they have different towns as well, is, and then it's. And then, so my first thing is, this is coming out of existing money, and then we go down, we're going to borrow it. So we're not really, we're not raising and appropriating, we're borrowing. I'm not sure about the language as opposed to, the language say to go borrow this money right off the bat as opposed to raise and appropriate. Because we're not raising and appropriating, we're going out and borrowing it. This isn't going to happen until you go get a bond for it, right? So we're not really raising and appropriating, we're borrowing. It's just a question of language. And I, first I said I was raising appropriate, I said, where's all this money coming from? More, there was all the bond stuff. And I'm just not sure, borrowing articles in the past have used the phrase raise and appropriate to introduce that.
So even more than that, Steve, is, is, you know, is the $200,000 to actually do the replacement?
No.
It's just to do the stuff? It's just the design?
Yep.
Okay. And we would borrow the money to do the design?
Mm-hmm.
I'm just wondering if, what I've got is, I'm looking at the $700,000 that we have in the water retained earnings fund.
That's sewer.
Right, but we also have $700,000 in the sewer retained earnings fund. And so the question is, rather than borrow money and have to pay it back out of sewer fees, what can we do out of our current retained earnings fund? And again, when I looked at, at the sum of these things, you know, our, our water and sewer retained earnings, we had these Long Meadow Street water mains, Long Meadow Street sewer mains. It seemed to me that doing studies might be, make sense to pay for out of our available funds rather than bond them. Whereas the actual replacements of whether it's Emerson Road or, you know, something else, we can do that. We ought to borrow because historically we do borrow for doing the actual replacement of water mains.
Well, the question is, is keeping, is there a balance you want to have in the, in these funds?
Well, $500,000 is our, is our, quote unquote, designated maximum. We're at 700,000. And we're probably putting more into it than we need. So there's, that's why I'm saying there's money to be had.
Well, yes, if our designated maximum is 500, we're well over that.
That's our designated minimum, 500.
Oh, it's our minimum?
That's our minimum. So the thought behind it was to bond, so we, my, what I don't want to happen again is we get another makeup bill from Springfield Water and Sewer in May or June and said, oh, by the way, we had some project delays and, you know, bond changes or capital, increase in capital costs. Here's another bill for 130, 140,000. Then that would bring me down to the $500,000 mark. I agree, we could use the retained earnings, but just as long as you allow me, if I get a bill, you know, in the late spring, to go below the 500.
I'd be more surprised if we don't get an increased bill than if we do. And as much as I don't think borrowing is such a great idea, I think if we're going to do it, now is the time to do it before our rates really start to move up. And they've got to move up, and I think we're still probably in a fairly decent borrowing environment, given our, you know, our rating and everything else.
Yeah. Later on in the warrant articles, there's a sewer one, Seamon project, that I shifted over to retained earnings instead of borrowing, and that's 200,000.
Because what my addition for this was 2 million, almost 2 and a half million we were going to borrow for all this.
Yes.
And so you reduce that by 200,000 with?
Sewer, the sewer retained earnings, there's a project later on, you'll see. We could do a small one with water, but, you know, like Jen said.
I don't think we want to get too close because I, between, between whatever they're building over there and whatever they're going to say, you know, transportation costs and material costs and everything else. As I said, I'd be more surprised if they don't say, oh, by the way, folks, what cost do you go up?
Just, just keep in mind, Steve, that when we borrow this money, okay, if we borrow this money, and the total in the, in the potential borrowing is 2 million bucks, right, as you said. You know, we generally pay that off over 10 years. That's 200,000 a year.
Yes.
We use about 780,000 units. That's 25 to 30 cents on our water bill that we're adding per unit from this additional borrowing. So I'm not saying we don't do it, it's just that it has an impact. And generally, what we've done is waited for us to pay, we borrowed over 10 years. So we wait to pay off some projects before we, you know, hopefully we're paying off projects when new ones are coming out. When we've got a couple of big projects like these design projects, it's just going to hit the bottom line for the sewer rates.
Right, and I asked you this, we don't have anything really that's going to be paid off equivalent to 2 million dollars plus in debt in fiscal '23.
I don't think so. Jen, do you know?
No, I have, I'm just looking at this quickly. The, the water fund looks like '24. FY '24 would be the best time to start bonding for projects there. And sewer, sewer goes '23 and '24. We had, we had some, we had a reduction this year in our sewer bond amount. So we could do a little bit there. Water, we have to wait another year or so. We could ban, we could ban. It costs 50,000 to ban for a year and then sell in a year. But, you know, they're looking at six to eight times that the interest rates are going to go up.
Right, that's exactly what I was going to say is, you know, we'd be better off now where the interest rates are still low. Because 2024, who else would tell me that?
Yeah, I can reach back out to our financial advisors and see if we can structure our debt to meet, you know.
Borrow it now and pay it later?
We could, you know, at the lower interest rates, you know, because then we could, well, we might not get these rates again. That's the thing. Well, yes, I don't think we're going to see these rates for a while.
I, just, my only comment is that if our retained earnings, you know, balances are high, they're, you know, it's money that we just, you know, just to have money to have money is nice. But if you can actually save money because you did, people paid for this in their water and sewer bills and, and, you know, yes, we're paying, we're, we're using that money to protect against the, as Jen said, the unexpected bills from Springfield Water and Sewer and for the collapse of, you know, Captain Road that happened 15 years ago that cost us $130,000 off the top, you know, with no time at all to do a major repair to the water, the water system there, you know. But $500,000, we still have to be able to cover that. That's my only argument to not just letting this water and sewer retained earnings contract, their balances continue to grow.
Right, well, what, what is our, our average of from 500,000 in retained earnings?
200 and some change.
Sewer or water? Which one are you asking about?
Either both of them. Sewer's bigger than water, right?
Yep, sewer has 710, so 210,000 we have. And water is 721, so 221,000. However, we did go to quarterly billing, and we will, we are expecting more retained earnings to come this year.
So moving them down to, since, I, we don't want to move it to 500.
Okay, take it down to 575 or 600 or something.
Yeah, somewhere between 575 and 600, I think we could probably live with. But in terms of a number, 500 is the minimum that we've set our policy. Given the fact that, you know, we're going to get jacked up by Springfield Summer down the line. So perhaps that's a couple hundred thousand bucks from each fund. You know, I think that's some reasonable compromise all the way around. Any thoughts, Josh? Get the money tray in your backyard because Jen doesn't seem to have one, so.
I got lots of pine cones at that house.
When you said you sent out a revised.
It's uploaded to the agenda.
Oh, that's why, okay, I didn't see, okay. All right.
So on these, 16 and 17, well, 16 is study, right?
They're both the same. They want to make sure the infrastructure is good underneath before they do the Long Meadow project on top.
Okay, so, so on 16 and 17, they were taking 100,000 bucks out of that borrowing for each one and use retained earnings for each one. Because one's water, one's sewer.
Is that what you want to do?
Is that what we want to do, folks? That's for the Article 15? Article 16 and 17. So we take another return, there's 200 there. We're taking, we're taking 100 out of return. And 200, yeah, okay. 100 for each one. So we're borrowing 100 as opposed to 200 for each one.
Okay.
Is that okay with you there, Mark?
Yeah.
Josh, anything, that's all right with you?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. So we could just, we'll remove those articles?
Yeah.
Or they'll be transferred? We're borrowing 100,000 dollars in each one.
So we're going to, but, but we still need to, do we need to vote to take the 100,000 out of retained earnings?
Yeah, we're going to have to add to warrant articles.
Okay. Yeah, because they can't be the same, right?
So then later on, when we get to it, we'll have to make another adjustment.
What we ought to do is back to back, so it's 17.
Yep.
Yeah, so we do it once and then, yeah, so we know what we're dealing with.
Yep.
Yeah, that makes sense. Okay, thanks, Steve.
Okay. So 18 is a biggie. So we don't have any choice?
Did you add for 18 that same statement about first instance from water?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Is that moved?
Yep. And then same on, pretty much same thing on 19?
Yep.
And this language voted inappropriate, is that going to stay with all these?
Yeah, this is language from bond council. We essentially just copy and paste it year after year after year from warrant articles. But we do run them all through bond council again to make sure it's going to work for them.
Okay, 20.
So again, that's going to come from water receipts, right?
So if you recall, pre-pandemic, there was conversation about a hydraulic trace, in tracer study was going to be done. All of that got halted during the pandemic because our water usage changed so much that DEP agreed to allow us to put it off until things returned to normal. Well, they, just this past late winter, late fall, early winter, they said, you got to move ahead with it. We can't keep waiting, it's close to as normal as we're going to see.
But we didn't even fund it already?
Yeah, that's already been funded. It's about to finish the end of April, and we're anticipating projects that are going to come out of that study that we need to start doing. So this is money is an attempt to make those, to fund some of that work.
Okay. Now Article 21, we're taking money out of retained earnings.
So this is the one, is this the one? This is the one that I was projecting to use retained earnings from instead of borrowing. But now that you've just made that change, we will amend this then if you want.
So like 6 and 1/2 dozen of them?
Well, this was 200,000 dollars. And we only took 100. I'd rather take the 195 out of retained earnings.
You took 200 off the table. You did 200 each one.
Well, you took 100 out of each. This is all, all, all coming out of sewer.
So this is going to be borrowed?
I'd like to propose that in the, we go back to Article 18 and take all 200,000 out of sewer and not borrow for sewer. Leave the 17 water 50/50. You know, 100,000, borrow 100,000 from retained earnings, and then we can borrow for this.
200 gets us down to like zero, that's it?
No, gets us down to 540, plus we got money coming in every quarter.
So this is the first, that's first warrant article 17. Is that the one that is sewer retained? Yes, sewer retention.
Actually, it's 16 and 17, yeah.
17 is sewer.
But 17 is sewer, right? So for 17, we'd only have the.
The 100 borrowing.
No, we borrow all 200, we, we wouldn't borrow anything. We'd have just all 200,000 for Article 17 would come out of retained earnings.
Retained earnings. Article 16, we'd have 100,000 coming out of, and then this 195.
That would then come out of the borrowing.
Okay, but if we're taking, that seems, those, what am I missing here?
You're not.
You're not.
Okay, so it's, it's 6 and 1/2 dozen of them?
Right.
Okay, all right.
So that's what you want to do? So 17 will be sewer.
Lynn, what's easiest for you? Do we borrow for 17 and, and take 21 out of retained earnings? Or we borrow for 21 and take 17 out of retained earnings?
It doesn't matter.
It's one less warrant article if we take it all of it.
Yeah, I mean, someone may.
Otherwise 100.
Right, right, right.
And one less warrant article, that's good.
Yeah, they just may wonder why we have, why we split it.
Because we have more money in the sewer retained earnings fund than the water retained earnings fund. That's the answer.
Does it matter if this is a three-year project, Lynn?
No.
The bottom first?
No.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, 22, we're done with the, 21 we're done with borrowing.
So 21 we're borrowing, right?
We're back to borrowing, 22 we're done with borrowing.
Okay, so this one, this is, in my town manager report, I talked about the asset management plan grant. We, it's similar, it's a reimbursable grant. We have to show that we are funding the project, and then we will, we will be reimbursed for our share of it, which will at that point be 50, we'll be fronting $50,000 of it. So we do not intend to actually borrow the full 250. And once the grant taps up, we would then rescind the borrowing authorization.
Well, 22 doesn't say anything about borrowing. Not just bonds, but this does not require a two-thirds vote?
It does, it might have just gotten left off there. Scroll down, Mike, if you don't mind. Yeah, I might have just missed adding that in there.
Okay. So this is similar to the Chapter 90 money?
Yep.
Except it can be enough for 50 grand.
Well, I, I would argue it's not the same, Chapter 90, because this money, it sounds like we have to put it out and get reimbursed.
We're not going to, no, we just on paper need to.
So, so then, so then why are we appropriating $250,000? Do we have to appropriate the grant money?
Yes. We have to appropriate the full grant.
Even in-kind money?
Yes, it's, I pushed back on them two times.
As long as you ask, that's goofy, but that's fine.
It's very goofy. It's definitely not the standard state grant that we're usage is appropriating the revenue.
As long as you ask, Jennifer, that's all I, because it wouldn't seem like you need to, I mean, it's costing us $50,000 out of pocket, and we got to somehow appropriate $250,000, but that's fine. If that's what it is, that's what it is.
And I hope you told them it was goofy.
Yeah, we tried to use other options.
I used a thesaurus.
Okay, 24. Seems to be pretty straightforward since we have to do it.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three?
No, that's twenty-three. Twenty-three is the dip.
Okay. I don't know, has any issues with twenty-three, I take it?
No. Twenty-three, yeah, that's true.
Twenty-four, which is the straightforward, we just?
So we are setting this limit of eighty-five thousand dollars because that's part of the municipal modernization act limit?
Yes.
Okay, that's all we, yeah.
Twenty-five, we're, community preservation, that's the start of community preservation.
This one, the state appropriated more money to the, for their match. So because of the more money, we have to appropriate to each of the three areas.
I think we do that every year.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, twenty-six. Administrative costs. Right, so we're overfunding this in the expect, expectation of throw a couple bucks back?
Yes. It all goes back to the undesignated account if they don't spend it.
Do we know what those balances are now in those accounts?
Undesignated, um?
Where were the buckets where they had?
They had a pretty good. Well, with all of their articles, if they pass, they'll have two hundred and seventy-seven thousand left in their undesignated. They started with a million, million.
So that actually includes the skate park, which I don't think they put into it, okay, all right.
Yes, that, that includes all the warrant articles.
Okay. Twenty-seven?
There's, you know, we can, all you, argue all we want, they're CPA.
Right, but we can say we don't think that's a good waste, that's a good expenditure of money, you know?
There's a lot of these I don't think is a good expenditure of money, but that's, for me, I did that once, I got my hands on it.
Well, you know, they, well, you know, so if you, if you have an objection to anything that they're doing, I think it's always worthwhile.
So, so then the issue is, and we're gonna get to that when we get to twenty-nine, which is in fact the, you know, whether it's the Edgerly Building number twenty-nine or the skate park. At what point does somebody stand up at town meeting and speak to the fact that these items don't meet our, any priorities established by any open space plan or our parks, and more importantly, and I think of this in terms of the Edgerly Building, they set priorities for our DPW, purchasing department, accounting department, everybody else, that can't be done without us deferring other projects. I mean, do we tell people, I mean, it, it's a tough discussion to have, but at some point, people need to understand that when you fund replacement of the Edgerly Building, something else doesn't get done. Because it's gotta be done by town.
Yeah, the Edgerly Building was a project put forward by the Parks and Rec Director and the Facilities Director, so they have gone through it together.
Okay, but, well, as you can hear, Mark, so they've got a million, let's make some numbers up. They've got a million bucks in, in their, in their bank. If they spend a hundred and seven thousand bucks on this, that's not, that's money that wouldn't, because it's in their bank, it would not necessarily go into anything else.
No, no, but my, my, my point, Stephen, is that, that if CPA says, the town will, I'm gonna put dugouts on Turner Field, okay? Town wasn't planning on putting dugouts on Turner Field, but dugouts don't go on Turner Field because the CPA appropriated money or the town appropriated money at their recommendation. Some, you know, Chad Thompson's gotta sit there and write an RFP for dugouts, and the, the DPW's gotta not do, you know, we don't have unlimited resources, not do something else, and, and the accounting department's gotta pay all these bills for, for, you know, which they're not doing other than, it, just-
Okay, I agree. So basically, the community preservation says, okay, folks, do this, and then everyone else does it but them. So, so all the, all these department resources are being used.
Exactly, right.
And that's a good deal.
So once, once it's approved, the only control the town has at that, the town is in the departments. The only control we have at that point is the prioritization of it within amongst our other work. That has not been something that we have been cohesive about in the past. So it, it definitely has pulled resources from other projects to handle these CPC projects.
And the issue for me comes not when Barry Jarvis or, you know, or somebody from the DPW goes to CPC and says, we, we wanna put the, it's when they get something coming out of, pardon me, expression, let field, from a non-department organization that's now setting priorities that we didn't, the town doesn't have the resources to, to complete. And so in order to do that, should it be approved, something that the town did set resources on is getting deferred. And, and my point isn't to say we're not gonna do it, but to let people know that, you know, this process has consequences. That, you know, you know, and frankly, you know, that was the answer I gave to, to a resident who asked the question about why aren't my sewers being repaired in my street? And I said, because the DPW, instead of repairing sewers, is building dugouts. Because we only have so many people in the DPW. And why are they building dugouts? Because the town meeting passed dugouts. Should we be able to do both? We should, but we just don't have unlimited resources. Now, that's taking it to maybe an extreme. But I think that's, that's the point I think we need to make at some point to town meeting. And I know Lynn wrote a note to the community preservation, but we need to continue to indicate that. That's all. I'm not saying don't do them, I'm not saying don't approve them. I'm just saying that, that it screws up a lot of the other things the town does want to do.
I think I got it. So, yes, so if those monies in the bank, there are, yes, there are the consequences that affect the way the town functions.
Right.
And so basically, Lynn, what you said then is the only thing the town can do is, okay, so here's the Edgerly Building that was voted to do. But in terms of what we need to do, we're not, we're not gonna put it at the top of the list. We can put anyone we want to on, on our list, is that?
Yeah, it should fall into the prioritization of what other projects we have on our plate. That's what should happen, and we will get there this year.
All right, so do we, what, so let's see, so we're now at, we're not at the Edgerly, that, we're at the, where were we? Twenty-six, no, twenty, twenty-seven. The, a survey of buildings constructed before nineteen eleven. Now, I assume that's like, is that, is that some poor person from town halls have to go do this, or is this something that the historical commission does, or, I mean?
I believe they have a separate contract for someone to do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I haven't looked at the application, but-
But, but Steve, my point is, historical preservation can't issue the purchase order to do that. It has to go through check. It has to, we're still using town resources to do this. I'm not saying it's not a good thing to do, people just need to understand. They use, even, even when they say, don't worry, we'll take care of it, it requires town resources. That's my only point.
Okay, so Article twenty-eight, which looks like a better use of town resources, or a use of town resources, so this is?
This is the H and H study, hydraulic and hydrology study. Hydrologic, sorry, and hydraulic.
And, okay, and again, this is coming out of their, part of their budget here. And is there any reason we wouldn't want to be in favor of this particular item, this study?
No, unless they want to reopen the old swimming pool that used to have that.
Well, I think, I think when they do the study, it might set up swimming pools, it's a lot of work on it, okay?
This project was put forward by the assistant town manager and the town engineer.
And in terms, is there something, a grant that?
Yes, so-
Which I logically mentioned.
For those that remember, took part in the Conway School work for Bliss and Laurel Parks. Some of the items that came out of that were a bigger conversation about removing the derelict dam structure that's further down Cooley Brook. There's a Department of Ecological Restoration grant that we are eligible for. But to be eligible for that part of what we need to do is a H and H study. They only needed a certain small locus area of that brook to be studied. However, we know that there's more work that needs to happen both in Bliss and Laurel, and it was more advantageous to us to do a study of the, of a bigger project area of Cooley Brook, because we also have some concerns about stormwater runoff further up by Blueberry. And then also up in Bliss, there's some significant erosion happening. So this, that's what this project is, it'll fund the whole thing and meet the grant requirement that we need.
And how much will that grant be?
I think it, I, I wanna say it's up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but I could be wrong.
Okay, and, and the question you're gonna ask is, so we do this, and then how much, do we have to redo it after, if there's a skate park that's built? Because it'll change all that stuff?
I, I can't speak to what could or couldn't happen with the skate park. I, I don't know. You would, I would think if you were going to construct a concrete impervious structure, you'd need some stormwater management associated, which would likely have an impact on the brook.
You would think that there might be some studies needed on all of this to happen.
Right, I just think it's-
Lynn, the other part is, you know, the concerns about stormwater, and so when they look at, so this will look and say, well, we have to have settling pools that will meet the requirements for runoff in our town, right?
Yeah, I don't have as many project details on the full scope as this, as Corinne does. I know she's planning on writing something up for finance committee next week because they had some questions, so I'm happy to share that with you all.
Yeah. Because the stormwater, you know, we can't have stuff running into the Connecticut River. And those dams probably create a settling pool.
Yes.
You know, in some sense. People used to swim there. That was the town swimming hole.
Right.
A long time ago, but, yeah, we got it. There's, I guess people took to really utilize that area.
Right, and so, and to Mark's point, basically, this should be done before any skate park gets built anywhere, but certainly around Bliss Park, that's for sure. Which is a point I think we want to make at town meeting floor. Okay, Article twenty-nine, now we're at Edgerly Building.
It's fine, I mean, that's their proposal, that's fine. But it's gonna, it's gonna live or die at the town meeting?
But the other thing is, Wolf Swamp Fields are gonna be utilized to a much greater extent in that Edgerly Building, where they sell refreshments and everything. You know, bring that up to date, it could make money. I mean, it could, you know, they could have a grill in there. I mean, I don't know what they're planning to do, but.
That's part of the issue is, you know, none of these have specifications around them. They're just to upgrade the, again, that gets to my point of who's gonna do the, the work to decide what they do, you know, are you gonna hire an architect, are we gonna, you know, whatever it is? But somebody, I assume the Park and Rec Department, if not the Parks and Rec Committee, gets a say in what that building, what you get for a hundred and eight thou- I mean, a hundred and eight thousand dollars, right?
Hopefully, it's a soft-serve ice cream.
You, you, you get a chance to put your requests in like anybody else, but, but, you know, that, I mean, a lot of this stuff, and, you know, like I said, even going back to the skate park, you know, it just says a skate park. There's no design approval, there's no, I mean, remember, we, we caught business from people in town because they didn't even think the adult center was specified sufficiently when money was, was approved for the adult center. They said, well, we didn't know there wasn't gonna be a, a gift shop in there. We didn't, you know, you didn't specify that, and, which we didn't, you know? But now we're telling, talking about spending, you know, money for, whether it's an Edgerly Building and Wolf Swamp Fields or a skate park or some of these other things, that's got no design, no specifications, just spend money and trust us.
It's forward-thinking, because that area is gonna get a lot of use.
I'm not saying it's not forward-thinking, Tom, I'm just saying that if somebody came to me and said, I need a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, I'd say, show me a plan that you're gonna get for a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred dollars. Because it could be that for a hundred and eight thousand, seven hundred dollars, they don't get a whole lot, and I'm assuming they'd get a lot.
Do any of these products need to go before the planning board, like the skate park? I mean, does, does the planning board have any say on this? Do we know?
I don't know. I don't know about the skate park.
Because, I mean, this isn't a new building, so maybe it doesn't have to go, but some, some of this stuff, you think?
No, Edgerly's not a new building.
Yeah, so it doesn't, that would not have to go, but the skate park would be-
Edgerly was put forward by the Parks and Rec Director and the Facilities Director, and there is an application, just like all the CPA articles that go into more detail. I will, I think that this Edgerly one, there were funds left over for the CPC grant the last round that they thought they could use for this work, but then found out that they could not because of how the warrant article was worded, so that's why this is coming back as a new warrant article.
Like, there's a road in a-
Yeah, yes.
Okay, let's move on. Article thirty.
For center school windows, the question, Lynn, is, it says repair and or replacement. There are people who would vote for one of those and not the other, and so my request is, is there any chance we can know whether it's the availability and or the cost of repairing the windows, so that when people go to vote at this, they're told we are, you know, leaning toward repair, or we're leaning toward replacement, so people can understand. Because like I said, I think people who vote for one may not vote for the other.
Yep, we are working on that. We, we're trying to get our architect here to take a look.
And does it make a difference in cost, whether it's repair or replace?
You can repair a whole lot more windows for the cost of replacing.
My feeling is, I think, I think since we don't really know, and maybe we'll know by town meeting, maybe we won't, and maybe the numbers will change by town meeting, I think this whole thing should be, until we know, I don't think we should be voting on this.
But you don't get to say that, because-
Well, I, well, we can, that can be our recommendation to table it till the next town meeting.
And I, I support that a hundred percent, Steve. I, I think the, the problem we run into is that, you know, and I wasn't at the community preservation meeting when that came, came up, but, you know, I don't know if that was discussed or not. I, my sense is that it was a, let's throw it to the town meeting and let them decide.
Right, and the, the building was redone, what, twenty-five years ago?
A little more than that.
Center school?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, things don't last that long anymore, you know, twenty-five years.
But, but for those of us who've looked at the windows?
Yeah.
Several of us think that they're repairable. Others think that they need to, I mean, look, I, I was on Capitol Planning, we replaced all the windows in the old high school. We replaced windows in Glenbrook School. Sills were rotted, the windows were broken, you know, they were leaked, they were, they needed replacement. These windows, there's no broken panes, there's no rot in the wood, you know, it, they're not operable, I grant you that. Most of them are not operable.
Yeah.
But they're not, you know, but they're not broken windows, you know? And what's not here, but was here originally, was, you know, the, the art, Center School is the most energy inefficient building in town. And it is, I agree with that. Assigning that to these windows, though, is in my opinion, a, a, a bad discussion. Because the reason Center School is the most energy inefficient building in town, because if you go by Center School during the day, the windows are open in the wintertime. You know, it has nothing to do with-
That's a good question, yes.
It has nothing to do with the windows being grafted. In fact, I would argue they're not. But again, that's just my opinion, and I think we need to find out that, you know, a new window at Center School costs twenty-eight hundred dollars, and a repair of the window costs three thousand, so let's replace them. Or a repair of the window costs, you know, five hundred, and let's repair them. I don't know what those numbers are, and that was my request.
Right, and so, Lynn, the, the study, or the architect coming in, someone's gonna actually take a look at these windows, and when is that gonna happen?
The request has been made. He may have already been in town, I, I don't know. I haven't, I'm not the one directly communicating with him.
Okay, so it would seem to me that if we don't know whether these things should be repaired or replaced? or replaced, that I think, yeah, at least the Select Board can make their recommendation. We've made a recommendation to the Finance Committee that this thing be tabled until fall town meeting, until we actually know what we're doing with this money.
But, but the CPA people are going to stand up and say, but let's appropriate $300,000 so that we know they need to be repaired, we'll repair them. If we know they need to be replaced, we can start on replacing them. That's why they put repair and/or replace in their, in their article, as opposed to one or the other. So I'm just telling you, Steve, that's going to be the counterargument. And whether we agree with it or not, that's what they, they're going to tell you.
Right.
Well, if we do.
Yes. Go ahead.
If we do give ourselves more time on this, or if we get more time on considering this, I'd be curious to know, I went by the other day, the windows are absolutely huge. I'd never really looked at them with that, a critical eye like that. And I imagine they do lose, if they're single pane, the old window, they probably do lose a lot of heat just because of the size of them. And I would be curious to know what our heating costs would, or cooling, I guess, how that would be affected if, if energy efficient windows were put in.
But Josh, just recognize that most of those windows have a secondary storm window on them. That doesn't make them easy to, or openable in the wintertime because the storm windows are fixed storm windows, like old fashioned. But they do provide effectiveness, especially the windows that were, are way, way up. These, most of these windows are like 12 or 15 foot, I mean, they're massive windows, you're right. So, but, so some of them are, are as you noted, but some of them do have storm windows. That's all.
Okay.
So does this committee want to have any recommendations about this article, or just let it be as it is?
I mean, the question is, do we want to be willing to stand up and say the Select Board voted, you know, to recommend that the town do such and such? I think that's what you're suggesting, Steve.
Yeah.
I'd be more than happy to do that.
Well, we, you know, we've already made the recommendation that they try to give us a tally about the number of windows that can be repaired versus have to be replaced. And can our GPW do that? And then we should dress it up, because it's going to create a lot, you know, it's just, if there's something we can do as a board to make it easier for people in town meeting to make a decision on that, we should. And I think that would be the only thing we can do, is to find out, you know, what's what. So then they could say, okay, this is an accurate figure, and, you know, we have an addition. So I, I don't know who made the original assessment. Do you have any idea, Lynn, who made the original assessment?
Of the windows?
Yeah.
It was a combination of facilities needing to be there every day to open the windows and close them, so they're there in the morning and in the afternoon. And I think complaints from staff in the building that they couldn't open them themselves, needing to increase airflow due to COVID. And that's, that's pretty much what I understand the incentive is at right now.
And Tom, I'll, I'll confirm everything Lynn said. What the, what the Building Committee was heard, was told, and what I heard, and we heard it from Nick Droganis, was that, is that they get calls every day from several teachers, come open our windows because they're not operable. Not, not, they don't say, our windows are drafty. It's, they're not operable. You know?
And so.
So I, you know, I think Lynn, Lynn was right on the mark. Steve, I'd be more than willing to propose a motion that the Chair of the Select Board recommend, tell town meeting that this, how the Select Board, you know, what our, our opinion is on a couple of these articles at town meeting. I'd be more than happy to do that. And I think that one of the things you commented on is the skate park, which I think is premature. I'd be more than happy to, to say the Select Board, or I at least, don't support that. And also, it's, it's that these windows be repaired rather, rather than replaced, or at least we, we rule out the ability to repair them before we replace them.
Right, right, right. I, I have no problem with that. That's Article 30.
I, I don't agree. I think that, you know, these are recommendations that come to us, and it goes before town meeting. We've always done it this way, and we've never weighed in on these as a board. Now, individuals can get up and speak to these issues, just like anyone else at town meeting, but I don't think we should start a trend now of saying, well, you know, as a board, we decided we don't like the skateboard thing. I don't believe we should do that. And I, so I would not support the motion.
Josh? Oh, Mr. Josh?
Yeah, I'm leaning towards town here. I, it just, it does seem, I, I think I asked this question a couple of weeks ago, whether we had the ability to change the language, take them all. If the procedure is for the Community Preservation to bring these, I think that we should give the town the chance to vote on it. And that's the point of town meeting, right?
We're not, we're not denying, we can't deny the town meeting to vote. That, we can't do that. We can't remove these articles. But we can, as a board, say, this is what the board thinks about this article. We think it's a good idea or a bad idea. And for a couple of these.
And, and they vote.
Right, but, you know, theoretically, theoretically, just like the Finance Committee, the Board of, the Select Board might actually carry some weight in terms of what we think about a, a warrant.
What we're discussing various whether we should recommend table it, right?
No, no, we can't do, no, not at all. We're just recommending whether we should make a statement on the floor of town meeting that says the Select Board supports or doesn't support these expenditures, that's all. We can't, we can't table, we can't get them off the warrant. And Tom, we did do that. We, we did. I, I can give you the, we, we, there was a, a screen that was going to go up on Bliss Field, on Reynolds Fields, that the board voted not to put on the warrant. And it was on that basis that the Community Preservation went back to the state and said, you can't do that anymore. But we did weigh in on it.
Okay.
Not that, not that we were supposed to, but we did.
But that was quite a while ago.
In terms of the warrant, you don't have to decide that tonight. Because it's not going to get printed.
You're right.
In the warrant. So we, you could make it through this, and we could have a conversation at your April 4th meeting about it.
Right. Although, since the Finance Committee is, the Finance Committee is having its hearing. Are they doing the voting on March 30th as well?
Yes.
So if we have an opinion about this article, if we have an opinion about the, the skateboard article, which both require, I mean, I, they're going to vote, we think this is a good idea or not, they vote on the money articles. I think if we, we tell the Finance Committee, it's the opinion of this, of the Select Board, that this is not how we would expend this money. If it was up to us, I think that would be good information for them to have at their meeting. And if I could tell them that as Chair, that would be swell.
I'm not.
And you're not, and you're not supporting that.
I'm going to vote against it, yeah.
So Josh, that throws the ball to your court, because I think Mark and I have agreed that this is not a bad thing for the Select Board to do, and it's not showing us their power and purview as Select Board members.
I just, you know, I just think that, you know, especially, you know, yes, there are a lot of details that are not there, but I don't think it's, it's my role to, as a board, you know, I, I just wouldn't vote that the board should make a statement about any one specific article. A lot of people have done a lot of work on these, so I wouldn't, you know, think that we should, you know, get three votes to say, ah, don't support this one. I, I don't think that's right.
Josh?
Yeah, you know, I, I think that we are, we're elected to, to guide, to be guidance, to give guidance to a certain degree. So I, I agree with you and Mark.
Okay, good. So when we.
Okay, so you want me to make them, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to go back to, trying to find the right article number.
Well, it's Article 30, which is the windows.
The, the problem with Article 30 is, for me, is that it says repair and/or replace. You know, my personal opinion is, we ought to be spending $300,000 on repairs. But somebody may stand up and say, you know, like I said, the repair, the repairs are going to cost us 95% of what a replacement costs. We don't have sufficient data.
No, we don't, yes, we don't know this, so we don't have.
You know, I, I, and I'm more than willing to stand up and say that as an individual, but I, I was hoping that we have some of those numbers so that I know whether I'm going to make an idiot on myself for saying we should repair them when in fact replacing is more.
Right. So let's see if your person has some information for us before, well, we're not going to know before March 30th, are we? Or will we?
Probably not.
Yeah, I'm not worried about that one with the, with the Capitol, with the Finance Committee. You know, but I.
Right. And we can, we can make our statement known at town meeting, depending on what, if they're saying $300,000, it's going to cost $100,000 to repair them, you know? That would be good information to have. And if it's not, right, then we don't need to stand up and, and do that. Okay. So, but in terms, let's get to where we need to be. So we, we have the last left off, Article 30, which is the, the windows, which we're going to wait and find out more about, and not make a statement about yet. 31 is the, the store's house, which is the library.
That's the house behind the library.
It's a part of library property in the whole nine yards. Okay. Any, any statements about that one? I just would like to know what the store's library trust fund spends its money on. Because this would be certainly something, that was an answer, back, back in the day, the Finance Committee never got a good answer for what, so. That would be something that I think, although I didn't make a big deal about it, I still would like to know what, what, what they do. Okay. Article what?
Next one's 32.
Good one's not a good one, no.
32 is the Appalachian Mountain, is, is the surveying the riverfront conservation land. And I, I, the only comment I'll make is, for another purpose, I've had, been having discussions with the Appalachian Mountain Club. They've just completed a map of the area. I think this is.
Dupliquitive.
Not just duplicative, but a waste of our money that, that they completed a recreational map of the Connecticut River watershed, that they're just, I think they just published it, because, and I hope to have copies of it for the town meeting to show that we don't need to spend this $8,500. But, you know, I'm, I'm not sure the Community Preservation Committee knew that at the time. I have to know it because I've been active and aware of what the Appalachian Mountain Club's doing. But that, that's got nothing to do with this article. Just.
Article four.
Article 33. Here's the good one. This is the skate park, which the comments have been made, is that there has been no preliminary, as far as we know, as far as we know, is that a skate park design company was paid $15,000 to say, hey, we can make you a skate park at Bliss Street Tennis Courts. And that's all the study that has been done. And so I think that, given Article 3, which I think is talking about the overall use of park space and recreation space, the fact that nothing, you know, unless, maybe Community Preservation will surprise us and say, yes, we know what's going to happen to the runoff, you know, impermeable stuff, and the fact that we're rather doing this hydraulic study, which is pretty close to where they're talking about, parking, the whole nine yards. We know that, as far as we can tell, the homework has not been done. And so this is an article that I think the board should recommend to the Finance Committee, that our belief is, this is not how we would want this money to be spent. Is that an accurate assessment here?
That's my assessment, yes.
Josh?
Repeat that, Steve, I couldn't hear the rest.
Well, it's just, was that an accurate assessment in terms of, we don't think that, we, we don't know enough to say this is, we, except, here's $350,000 that we want to build a park. We have not done any kind of environmental study, water runoff, parking, traffic, need. I mean, I don't, you know, do people really want this in this town? None of the preliminary work has been done, as far as we can tell. But, you know, with the runoff and with the fact that we're assuming Article 3 has passed, and we've appropriated this money for use of, of parks and fields in this town, you know, is this, does this fit into that study? Where does it fit into the open space plan? Has anyone ever talked about that? So we don't, we, I would, like us as the Select Board, to recommend to the Finance Committee that they do not approve this expenditure money at town meeting floor.
I will say for the record, I'm generally in favor of a skate park, if, if that's what people want, but I, I don't think, I, I agree with you, based on what we have here, we're just, it's a shot in the dark, and I wouldn't feel comfortable going forward with this.
Okay.
And Josh, I think.
I'd agree with that.
And Josh, your comments reflect mine as well. I think a skate park's a great idea, I'm just not sure that the homework's been done. Impact of, of the skate park at that location has been studied enough and understood, given all the other things we're looking to do with our parks. And, and the question is, do we recommend it to the Finance Committee, or do we authorize the Chair of the Select Board to also make that same comment at town meeting floor?
Yeah. And I, again, skate parks, I, I think, you know, I don't, I'm not that happy with the location, actually, with the clay tennis courts, because people whose knees aren't as young prefer clay, but I guess they'll have to go to Springfield. But, yeah, I, you know, tastes change, you know? If, if, if the, you know, they've done a lot of work to get to this point, so I wouldn't go against it, no.
Steve, I'm going to make a motion that, that our, the Select Board recommend to the Finance Committee, that they recommend against funding this based on the fact that there's not been enough study of the impact of this at this location on the park.
A second? Can I second a motion? Can I second your motion? Can the Chair second a motion? Yes, I will second that motion. So I assume we need a roll call vote for this one?
Yes, we do. Mr. Rance?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
No.
Article 34. No one could be against bluebird boxes, can we?
No.
Home Town Mall's much across the street from the CVS and.
Yeah. This came out of, I think, a group of individuals, more than even the building.
Yeah, I'm not entirely sure.
You know, I mean, this is another one that.
Will require work from other folks to do.
Right.
But I, I suspect the building probably doesn't need work. That would surprise me. Article 36. Which was presented to us pretty much last time. So what this means is, if you have a sprinkler system now, your grandfather for the, not grandfather, for the.
Rain sensor?
You're going to need a rain sensor or a groundwater moisture sensor.
And are we, there's no intention of subsidizing whatever this, do we have any, how much these things cost?
I think the estimate was about $150. We're exploring, the idea that we like the most is a rebate. It's easier to maintain. Not for the full $150.
And would that be discussed with this one article by, or at that time?
Well, we did, you know, there was a point that came up, was mentioned that in towns where people have a secondary meter, that that wasn't identified as water use in the same way, right? I mean, and so now we have people, we do winter averaging, and so that water use should be, shouldn't be, you know, it's not, if it's not looked at in that way in other towns, it should have looked at in our town, you know?
Is it part of the 65 gallons per day per person?
Yeah, 65 gallons per day per person. And, and if in other towns, that's excluded, if they have a secondary meter, then with winter averaging, we should be able to exclude that.
that number also.
Well, the question is, is it exact? I didn't realize it was excluded in other towns.
I don't know that.
Well, when we had the meeting, the, the individual who's here said it was excluded in other towns that had secondary meters. How many towns have secondary meters? For watering, huh?
Springfield does. I don't know about others.
No, I go on, there's other towns, yeah. And he said it came out of, it was, and so I was, I asked that question, and so I think we should also know the answer to that. But if we do not pass this warrant article, aren't we in trouble with the state, in terms of what they want us to do on the 65
Yes.
of water usage?
We look much better in DEP's eyes if we have this bylaw.
But, but in fact, there's nothing in this bylaw that in it, of itself, will reduce our water usage, other than those people who water it in the rain, or water when their, when their lawns are already wet.
Which would in turn save them money.
Which would in turn save them money, but cost them 150 bucks or whatever if they don't have the sensor. The, the point is that, that we're not telling people you can't water, we're not telling people, you know, that, well, we're telling them they can't water in the rain, or shouldn't be watering in the rain.
Well, if they want to water in the rain, it's going to cost them.
No, and I forgot who it was, but I was talking to somebody the other day, who said, in fact, the best time to water is when it's raining, because then you get a deep soaking into the roots of the grass. Now, whether I believe that or not, I'm not sure, but at least that's what I was told.
Isn't this, has certain limitations when there is a drought?
Yes.
But we have the authority to do that anyway, because we've done it in the past. Because we're the water and sewer commissioners. This just puts it into a bylaw.
It disqualifies us, so.
And it creates a fine, too. Because right now, there's no teeth if you do something.
If you're watering in the rain?
No, if you're watering in drought.
Oh, yes.
If you're watering on, you know, if you can only water on even days and you're watering on a hot day or something like that.
Yeah, well, it also says the water commissioners can, you have to get permission if you want to fill your private swimming pool, right?
Yeah, if you're in a drought, yeah.
Yeah. So any kind of water use. Okay, this is, this is a long article, that one.
Yeah, and, you know, that, I, I know, because I talked to you and learned about it. I mean, you're planning on doing a mailing about it to people in town and other things. So I, you know, it, it needs to be on the, on the warrant. I'll support it on the warrant. I'll screen up and speak to it if it's appropriate on the warrant. And people have, just get over the fact that, yeah, it requires you to have a moisture meter or a rain sensor, and that's all it does. Everything else is common sense.
And most of it has to do with a drought, I mean,
Right.
in drought circumstances. Okay. So, then we're ready to vote on the, the warrant, based on?
I assume there's going to be a signature page at the end of this?
Yes.
And when are we going to sign this warrant that seems to be published? Okay. You've got the signature page?
When did you sign?
Okay, that's all.
When did you sign?
When did we sign it?
I was going to have them sign it today, but if we don't, if we need to make adjustments to it.
Well, we can stop in and something.
Yeah, I will say that. You know, a lot of electronic signatures as well, or?
We are still authorized to use them, so.
Okay. Well, we can either stop in or, yes.
Steve, I'll make a motion that we adopt the warrant of 36 articles as reviewed here with the changes as we indicated, as we went along this. And I'm not going to,
There'll be more articles than 36.
Right, there'll be 37, because we're adding one more.
Yeah.
So we'll be back to 37, right?
Yeah.
Correct. So, and, and I'm not going to enumerate the, the changes, but I, because I think we captured them all, right?
Okay, I'll second the motion. Okay, Mike, I assume we're done discussing this? Okay. Give us a roll call. Mr. Rance? Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Okay. One-day liquor license. That's on the, that's on the agenda? Well, I need, it's up to me, I can bring it up, but it's on the agenda. So this is another one. This is the adult center.
Yeah, I'll move, we approve the one-day liquor license for March 31st at the adult center for art show.
I'll second it.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, and a discussion. Mike?
Mr. Rance?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
Okay. I just have a, Lynn, the, the letter from the DEP seemed to indicate that we really need to do something fairly soon. Is that all part of the H and H, all the studies that are going on?
I don't think I've even seen that letter.
It was modestly threatening that we need to do something by, relative, by September, that something had to be done. This was like, would be the readings and the water.
That was an older letter from, I believe they sent down in 2019, that they resent for a next step.
Well,
Yeah, so this directly,
They keep citing the 2019, 21, this, your letter, our letter, their letter.
So this directly relates to the hydraulic modeling and tracer study that's about to conclude in April, and then the warrant article that ties to the $200,000 in funding for work that will be identified in that study.
Okay, this, this should come then. Okay. I would certainly look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I second it.
Okay.
Mike?
Mr. Rance?
Yes.
Mr. Levine?
Yes.
Mr. Gold?
Yes.
Mr. Lucusa?
Yes.
So moved and adjourned. Not too bad.
Thank you.
Yeah, good night.
Good night.
Good night. He doesn't have to go.